We will now convene our city council study session. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda items for our July 1st council meeting. I know we had some staff presentations earlier this week on some of the items on this agenda. Mr. Brady, do we have any other staff presentations on any items on this agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we would, if it's okay, I'd like to have Travis come forward and just share with council a little bit about what we're doing in 4D. Because as we've talked about, the American Rescue Dollars and how we might use those, we think this is a project that we would consider fitting that purpose and how it's providing for Wi-Fi connection in downtown. So where is, oh, there he is. I'm sorry. I was looking for him.
Kind of shy.
Sorry, Travis, I didn't see you changing the oil on the computer.
It's the equivalent. Get this jump drive in here.
Travis has the coolest thumb drives.
Sorry, Travis, I should have hit you up there sooner. But one of the, one of the projects we've worked in the downtown is trying to provide Wi-Fi connection throughout the downtown and we, some time ago, we stood that up. But we've, and we've recognized that it has been a really good opportunity for visitors and people that work downtown while they're out walking around. Now we'd like to look at replacing that equipment and, and enhancing that and expanding that service throughout the downtown area. We think that's, fits in very well with having it connected downtown. And so I think, Travis, even if you don't have the, do you have, okay, there, okay, perfect, there you go. Good job. I knew there's a reason we had you.
Call the help desk. Thank you, Chris, Mayor Council. So, yeah, item 4D is to replace our public Wi-Fi that we've got in, this specifically refers to the, relates to downtown Mesa Square Mile. And I'll show that to you, but what we've been doing in the grander scheme of things to help bridge the digital divide is we've been working with Mesa Public Schools and this is what I want to show you on this map here. And looked at the CDBG, the census tracts of lower income areas in the city and that. And as you can see, or at least once I explain it, you can see it that these line up fairly well. These, the boxes with the hash marks in them are areas, and I'm running my cursor across them, are areas that Mesa Public Schools identified by doing a survey of their families, areas that students have little or no access to internet connectivity. Also, these same areas are areas that are identified as low, lower income families. And then so they line up fairly well. And so what we are trying to do to quickly get internet connectivity to folks in need is to expand our public Wi-Fi, one. And two, we're, we've got a proof of concept that we're standing up that's a private cellular service, for lack of a better description, that the city of Mesa would own and control. And so we've been working with Mesa Public Schools on that. The cool thing with the, with the private cellular is a tower or antenna array would serve three square miles. And so we think that with 10 square miles total, we can cover all of these, these tracts that are underserved currently. So this next slide, we're zooming in on the block that will be covered by item 4D. And that's the downtown Mesa. And so it's the square mile between, between Country Club and Mesa Drive and Broadway and University. And so today, we have, and I will further zoom in, today we have access points that are reaching end of life that, for example, at the end of Mesa Drive and Country Club, there's a taco bar there, for example. There's a Wi-Fi hotspot there, but it only covers about 1,000 feet of area. And what we want to do is saturate this square mile so that we can be able to provide public Wi-Fi and it's high-speed internet to everyone within that square mile when they, when they come into it and that. And so then we would start to, as you can see, expand out in the Phase 2s and hopefully use the ARPA funds to, to fully build out this, this whole area, which would cover all of the areas that were identified as underserved.
So Mayor and Council, we, we owe, we talked about coming back to council with the full, the full budget for how to spend, but those dollars, the federal dollars, the rescue dollars. But there was, as we had the last conversation with council, there seemed to be a lot of interest in working on connectivity for our community, especially in the lower income areas. And Travis had already been working and bringing this 4D to the council, where we're changing out the older equipment and expanding it right here in downtown. So we just wanted to let you know what we'd like to do, as identified in this item, is already designate, what is it, a little over half a million dollars from those funds for this, for this purpose. And then we will come back to council right after the break with the broader, the whole package. But with this opportunity now and Travis's folks already having put the work together to replace equipment and expand this area, we wanted to share that with you today and suggest that may be a good use of those funds right now.
Great. I know we've got lots of questions, including Mr. Luna, who's been very active at, at the national level on this topic. But let me, are we saying a half a million dollars for a half a mile?
It's gonna cover one square mile.
One square mile? That seems like a great deal. Half a million dollars for a square mile. Okay, thank you very much. I want to get into that. Mr. Luna?
Hey Travis, thank you. You know, you and I have had conversations about this, making sure that we provide internet for our students, especially of low income. And so are we looking at Eisenhower, Lincoln, do you know the elementary schools, we're looking at Eisenhower Elementary School, is that, is that going to be included in that as well as Lincoln? We're not going as far as Gilbert Road, right? We're, we're going to stay within Country Club and Mesa Drive?
Mayor, Council, I want to be careful. Today's item is just for the downtown area.
Okay, okay.
So it's just a very, it's just that one square mile.
Okay.
We will come back to you in August.
Okay.
With that entire program, the larger, broader picture about covering the areas that the school districts identified by their parents where they're, they don't have connectivity, that also match up with what we call in the federal guidance, they call them qualified census tracts.
Right.
And why having, if they're following the qualified census tracks, that gives us a lot of flexibility and broadband or connectivity is a big effort. Let, if you'll give us time to come back in August with all those details, the specific schools, because we're kind of in those conversations.
Right.
I think the good news is Travis and his staff, his team, have put together, like he called it, a proof of concept that we think will work, that we'll be able to expand this public connectivity. And what's nice about it is we can either use city current assets like light poles or whatever. And then if we can also, and we think we're having good conversations with the school district, and also putting devices on their campuses that will avoid having to do trenching and building out conduit.
Right.
Because then that's, as the mayor knows, that gets really expensive and really disruptive. So this may be a solution that we think can provide the service to those areas that are most in need, but also do it in a way that's minimal impact to the infrastructure of the community. But let, if you, if we could come back in August with that.
Right.
Today, he's, I think Travis started showing you the big, big picture, but when, today really we're only funding the part in downtown, but we wanted to, I guess we're kind of teasing you a little bit with the trailer to come here, to come in August with the proposal for the bigger picture.
Okay. And then as far as you, you mentioned the cellular service as well. Because you, I think it was two years ago, you and I talked about providing some reasonable services throughout low-income areas in the community. Is that the same company or is that, are you looking?
Well, we're, we're partnering with a, and I'm careful to say the name of the, the company that we're partnering with, but it's someone that we work with currently to provide communication services. And they're standing up a proof of concept at our communications facility down by the A's Training Facility. And we think it, well, we don't think, we know it's going to cover three square miles there. And once it stood up, we'd like for our city manager and Mayor and Council to come demo it. The idea behind it is that we would hand out the mobile hotspots to families. I guess they, you know, they go through a process or whatever and qualify for them. And so we'd hand those out and they'd have internet connectivity through the private cellular network at no cost to them.
So it'd be totally free? And then as far as, you know, the FCC is providing $50 discounts for households. Are we, is that something you're also promoting as part of your connectivity and deliverability?
Ian, yeah, Ian's had some discussions with the, with the city manager about that as well.
Okay. Especially when we look at our low-income areas, they certainly qualify. And I think we need to promote it. It's basically free, free money. It's $50 a month.
Yes.
Which is certainly, would have a positive impact in our low-income communities.
Absolutely.
That's it. Thank you.
What's the capacity of, I mean, is this enough for a kid to do his homework and his parents to stream a movie at the same time?
Well, if you, if you think about it, Mayor, all of us that have internet connectivity in our house are, we're leveraging Wi-Fi within our house. And so that same throughput is what we call it in the technical world, is what you would get on these public Wi-fis. So it can get perfect conditions if you've got the right laptop and you're in the right area proximity to the access point, you can get up to two gigs of throughput, which is faster than what we get in our houses. Right now, we've got the internet, public internet throttled back. So I don't know if anyone's used the Wi-fis that we have deployed now, but we've got those throttled back to 10 megabits per second. And, and no one's complained. There are actually apartments on South Center, around South Center, that some of the folks, that's what they use as their primary internet connectivity, and it's 10 megabytes. And what we're deploying is, is going to be north of 100 megabytes, 10 times that speed.
And it depends proximity, how much.
Yes.
Say that, it's, you know, the further you're away from these points, then it could be, it could be different, so. But that's something we'll have to continue to measure our performance, the performance of the system over time and whether we need to be more detailed. But we're, we, right now, for downtown, this proposal would be pretty, continue the service we have and expand it. So we think that's great for people visiting or people that live or people that do business in downtown.
Great. Let's go with Ms. Billingsbury and then Ms. Duff.
I was just going to make a comment. I think they're marketing that internet program through the Rent and Utility Assistance Program. And providers are marketing through that as well, so.
So a few questions. I'm aware of, you know, the downtown Wi-Fi and I've used on occasion. So that Wi-Fi will be at a larger capacity now with this expansion? And is this fiber with repeaters? What's the technology?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, it would be, yes, expanded to a broader area. So what that means is we're going to put more access points in and so that the signals overlap, so we've got more coverage instead of spotty coverage in downtown. And so it's not, we leverage our fiber optic network to hook up one of the Wi-fis and then that connects back to our broader network at the city. And then, then the Wi-Fi is just wireless connection from that point.
One of the reasons that it's, we've been able to be successful downtown, we've already run, we have a very robust conduit and, well, our own fiber system in downtown, the city does, that it controls.
We have actually helped some, some businesses in downtown that could not connect to the internet, and we provide their connectivity today.
So when you say businesses connecting to a public Wi-Fi, can they take measures in order to protect their own information?
Well.
From a shared access?
So there's a, when you connect to the, to the Wi-Fi, there's a disclaimer that you accept. And so what we do is we put protective measures in so that folks can't infiltrate our network through the public Wi-Fi. And so we've got it segmented from our city network. Basically, this is providing an avenue for folks that are visiting or in their homes to access the internet, but it doesn't traverse through our network. We've got it protected against that. And so businesses would want to go in and put their own securities in place for sure.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Luna?
Travis, they can do VPN, right? If they're doing wireless to protect themselves?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, yes, VPN, which is how, when we're working remotely, we get back into the office, we can connect through a virtual private network.
Right.
And it's secure. And that's a, so definitely work across this.
And that would include our businesses that are taking advantage of that?
Absolutely.
Free Wi-Fi?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Great. Well, this is, I know we have expressed a real interest in figuring out how to expand our broadband capacity in the city particularly to the address, the digital divide that I think has been so apparent during the pandemic. So I think this is a great first step to do that. We'll look forward to hearing in August more about this. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, anything else?
Just, if you'll notice on item 7F, not brought this to our attention, we included this item on the agenda prior, well, the P&amp;Z meeting was last, last night. And so that had not been heard until last night, so we didn't have the final outcome. And so we can tell you that, did you receive approval? A vote was four, one?
That's correct.
Four, one. So it did, was a pass, but we just wanted to bring you up to date on item 7F.
Okay. So that, that's for introduction, correct?
July 1st.
And setting July 8th is the hearing?
Yes. That's correct.
I do know there, there are a few zoning cases in the past, I think I've asked a question about 7B. I'm still talking to people about that zoning case, but I don't intend to, to, I'm going to be voting in favor of setting July 8th as a hearing on that, but I'm, I continue to have some conversations with some of the neighbors on that. Council, any other questions on items on the, on the July 1st agenda? All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our, on our agenda for this meeting then is item 2A. That's to hear an update from the Maricopa Association of Governments regarding homelessness and an overview of the process, strategies, and coordination for a regional response to homelessness. Natalie, I think you've brought a special guest, Amy St. Peter is a person who's very familiar to those of us who attend MAG meetings. Amy, thank you so much for your efforts on homelessness in particular, but also we appreciate all that MAG does for the city of Mesa.
Thank you very much. Mayor and Council?
I wanted to just do a really quick, kind of providing a little bit of perspective on this. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Natalie Lewis. I work in the city manager's office. As the mayor said, Amy St. Peter, who is a deputy executive director, is here to provide this presentation for us. The city has been working diligently and we've had a lot of conversations with you about building our infrastructure in Mesa to really serve our homeless in really efficient and effective ways. And we're going to continue doing that. And in fact, we will be bringing forward some additional recommendations for your consideration right after the break and using some of the rescue dollars. So we're going to continue doing that. And I think some of the recommendations you'll see are in the more proactive side of what we're trying to do from the pandemic and making sure people don't become more homeless and that we help stand them up. But parallel to our process and our work is this regional effort. And so Mesa's had a seat at the table for quite some time. We started off meeting in the East Valley. And now it has kind of broadened to the entire area of Maricopa County. So the conversation has been good. It's been moving. And Amy St. Peter has been the lead from the Maricopa Association of Governments. She's been a great partner. And so she's here today to bring you up to speed about what we've done so far as a region. There's still much more work to be done, but we want to make sure that the council hears what, what's been done and sees the analysis that's been done to date and has the ability to start weighing in on, on some of these ideas as we move forward. So with that, I'll let Amy take over.
Thank you very much, Natalie, and Mayor and Council for having me here this morning. It's an absolute pleasure to share this time with you. The goal of my presentation today then is to share with you some information about these regional efforts, but more importantly, it's to hear your priorities, it's to hear your concerns, to receive the direction that you might want to offer to help inform these regional efforts. These need to be relevant to you. These need to support your priorities, in particular, in meeting the needs of your housed and unhoused residents here within the city of Mesa. And to provide a level of consistency then across the region in terms of how we address homelessness and really to promote regional ownership of this issue. So I want to thank you. You've truly been a leader in this space and we're eager to learn from you and eager to partner with you in these efforts moving forward. It is important to recognize that every community is in a different place when it comes to this topic. Just as every person has different needs, every community has different needs. So it's very much our goal to be able to develop a regional process that honors these differences and supports each community in entering this conversation, no matter where they're starting from. But the ultimate goal then is for every community to be doing something to address homelessness. And that will manifest differently in different communities, but it's our role to be able to support you in, in your work at the local level and then to be able to scale up this work then at the regional level. So I encourage you to please ask questions, provide input, and be happy to engage in this dialogue with you. Moving forward then in the presentation, that may be aspirational. Okay. Okay, here we go. Slowly working our way up. Okay. So these are the topics then that we'll be discussing. Really laying the groundwork for, for what are we doing? What are we building together that we couldn't do on our own? And why? Really looking at the reasons that are prompting, ramping up the regional response to homelessness. And then, and then, and then what are the next steps? So what are we looking at doing over the summer and then in the months to come?
Let me do that for Amy.
Okay.
Amy, before you go any further, if you don't mind, Council, that I've been told, and I've seen this presentation, but there's a lot of slides here. So if you don't mind, I'm going to ask that we hold on to our questions, just so that we, want to ask every single question that you might, that crosses your mind, but why don't, if you don't mind, keep track of them. Let's let Amy get through the presentation, because a lot of the slides build on each other. And if you have a question, it probably, there's a good chance it's going to be addressed in the slide that follows.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor. So, and, and for members of the council, first we'll be talking about what are we building together? Next slide, please. Thank you. And so this is our focus throughout all of these efforts. It's really building an action plan, focus on action. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of research, a lot of study that's been important to this process, but we're ready for action. And, and the communities really need this action right now, because many communities throughout the region are really straining beneath the burden of trying to care for people who are experiencing homelessness. And we, we just need better regional approaches. So we've had three main areas of focus. One is actually reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness. We need to demonstrate that changes are occurring as a result of these actions. The other is to increase access to these homeless assistance programs throughout the entire region. We know that currently, some communities are overburdened, are doing perhaps more than their share. And we want to be able to spread the responsibility for addressing homelessness throughout the entire region. We also understand that people stabilize more quickly when they're close to their job, to their friends, to their faith community, to their children's schools. And so we want to help people where they are and then help them to stabilize and be in a position to contribute positively to their communities. And then also very much focus on keeping people housed during and after the pandemic, really building on the great partnerships that have, that have come into place as a result of this crisis and being able to keep those lessons learned and move together better throughout the region and into the future. Next slide, please. So in terms of this work, it's only possible because of our partners. And we really consider the city of Mesa to be one of our key partners in this work. So we want to thank you for that. Also, very much in particular, I want to thank Vice Mayor Duff and Mayor Giles. They've been very active in, in the events surrounding the outreach for these regional efforts. I want to thank them in particular. We've been fortunate to be able to work with really trusted nonprofits who have deep expertise in this space, such as, say, The Family and Mesa, The United Way. So want to thank you, because it's not just about local government coming, coming to the support in this work, but it's also about the nonprofit community and really being able to, to leverage their deep expertise. Next slide, please. And so why are we doing this? And, you know, we could even just stop at that one picture, because we're doing this for the people who are experiencing homelessness and who are at risk. But more and more people are experiencing homelessness throughout the region. So the fourth year in a row, according to our 2020 data, through the point in time count, homelessness is increasing. That's a similar trend that we see across the country, across the country. We're seeing a rise in homelessness for the last four years. What's kind of unusual though, in this, in this last year, is that for the first time ever, there are actually more people unsheltered than we could accommodate in shelters. So there are more people sleeping, sleeping on the streets than we could bring in to, to a safe place to sleep for that night. What's also unique about this is our growth is outpacing literally the rest of the country. So when you look at data from the 2020 count, again, at the federal level, and you can, and you compare our percentage increase, particularly in general homelessness and single individuals, it's literally the highest in the country at just around 10%. We're fifth highest in the country for families experiencing homelessness and having that percentage increase. So these are concerning trends, are concerning here locally, regionally, as well as nationally. But, so we need to be looking at, why is our, our rates of homelessness increasing and why is it outpacing some of our neighbors then? Next slide, please. We're seeing similar trends in Mesa as well, similar to the region and similar to the country, and seeing increases over the last four, four or five years in, in the unsheltered count here within the city of Mesa. Next slide, please. There are a number of reasons for this, and this is one reason that we have in common really with the rest of the country. Particularly when you look at the economic impact of COVID-19, we see that low-wage workers have been disproportionately impacted. So those most vulnerable, those least able to recover, have been among the hardest hit. Next slide, please. Also, another factor that is more particular to our region and the reason why we're outpacing the rest of the country in growth and homelessness is the lack of affordable housing. It's in limited supply in many parts of the region. I know Mesa very traditionally has, has had a very balanced housing portfolio. And so you may be seeing less of this. But within the city of Mesa, we have seen rents increasing as well. And that's common throughout the region, throughout the country. And so those increasing housing costs are putting more and more people at risk. And this has been a trend over the past 10 years. And Mesa is focused on building higher wage jobs and housing, but the underlying impact of that could be loss affordability as well. Next slide, please. Throughout the region then, throughout the county, we know that the moratorium on evictions has helped to keep people in their homes throughout the pandemic. We also know that people have already actually been evicted, but just not locked out. And they may soon be locked out when the moratorium is lifted within just the next week or so. So, so within just a few days, we may see a dramatic increase. Working very closely with ASU as well as U of A to be able to predict how many of those people may become homeless as a result of being locked out then. And the numbers are high. So we're continuing to dig into that research. Next slide, please. At the county level as well as at the community level. And so for Mesa, you've invested more than $22 million in rent and, and utility assistance just in the last year, and you've served more than 10,000 people. So that's helped the residents in Mesa considerably and really is kudos to you for your leadership at providing support at a critical time. Next slide, please. So when we talk to people experiencing homelessness, what's contributing to them losing their homes? They offer a variety of different reasons. The top three that you'll see here on the chart is family dispute, economic, and eviction. So very much a timely topic. Again, with Mesa, you've done a lot of work to help people to keep them housed. You've also done a lot of work, particularly when it comes to mental health and substance use. The way that you've shifted the, the police response to include non-police personnel to respond to calls is significant and will very much have a positive impact. When we look at the numbers of people who have mental health issues or cite mental health issues and substance use as being the primary reason for them losing their homes, it's between 10 to 15%. But we know that the rates of mental health issues and the rates of substance use are really much higher. They're just not cited as being the primary reason for someone losing their home. That references back to a housing-first model, where if we can get people into housing, they're much more likely to stabilize. So while they might not cite that as a primary reason, it does, in essence, contribute to them losing their homes and particularly to them remaining on the streets for longer, longer periods of time. So Mesa then is really raising the bar on how to address mental health issues and substance use issues as it pertains to homelessness in particular. And we're very much wanting to lift up your efforts here and to encourage other communities to do the same. Next slide, please. So we're interested not just in people experiencing homelessness right now, but also in people who may be at risk. And so we're using a number of different data indicators. It's critical that all of this work is very much data-driven. And so we're looking at different sources of data to help us understand who may be at risk for losing their homes. And so people are losing their homes throughout the entire region, some in higher concentrations than others. But you'll see that there's a level of need throughout the entire region, including the city of Mesa, when you look at the, the initial claims that had been filed for unemployment and more than 71,000 people filing for those unemployment claims and benefits. Next slide, please. Another indicator for that then, that is a commonly accepted measure for people at risk of losing their homes, are people who are paying more than 30% of their income each month just on housing alone. And so you'll see that there are deep pockets of need throughout the entire region, and this is a concern. And so for communities, for example, that may not currently be experiencing a high number of people who are experiencing homelessness right now, prevention or diversion may be one of their strategies in front, and I know that that's a priority for the city of Mesa as well. So it's preventing people from losing their homes, which is more cost-effective and ultimately more humane as well. Next slide, please. Another indicator then for people who may be at risk are the people who are calling 211 specifically for housing assistance and for homeless assistance program referrals. So again, you'll see that there's a level of need throughout the entire region, to varying degrees, and that includes the city of Mesa as well. We don't necessarily see a deeper pocket of need within Mesa, thanks to the investments that you've made in emergency rental programs. It is important to consider a range of solutions that specifically meet the needs of residents in individual communities, but then assessing those needs at the regional level to make sure that we're not leaving any gaps. Next slide, please. So while there is a level of need throughout the entire region, there's not necessarily a level of consistent support available throughout the region. And so you'll see here on the current map, you'll see the locations of the homeless shelters and the housing programs are available to people experiencing homelessness, and they are not consistently present throughout the entire region. So it's our goal through this regional work to ensure that the circles that you see expand throughout the region in some form. And again, this work will manifest differently in different communities, but it's important to have a level of support that's specific to the needs of residents available throughout the entire region. Next slide, please. So it's not just important what we're doing, it's very important how we're doing this work. Next slide, please. We started this work back in the fall, when we received requests from our member agencies to do a few things, and that was really to strengthen the regional response to homelessness, in part because of the increasing numbers of people experiencing homelessness, but also because of the disproportionate burden that's present throughout the region in terms of meeting this need. And so expanding that geographic footprint of those homeless assistance programs has very much been at the forefront of these efforts. When we started this work then, we were very focused on research and outreach. We're focused on research because this work needs to be data-driven, and this work also needs to be deeply embedded with an outreach to ensure that we're hearing from people, from communities, how they want to be involved in these efforts, and how they can best be served by these efforts. And then just last month at the MAG Regional Council, thank you very much to the city of Mesa for your positive vote on that. The MAG Regional Council did adopt the 14 regional strategies that have been developed as a result of this work, and right now we're shifting to tactics. So developing that action plan then, and identifying specific tactics with measurable outcomes, as well as the identification of possible funding sources and lead partners and other stakeholders in this work. Next slide, please. So the vision and mission then that have shaped this work is really around sharing the responsibility, and to ensure that all communities in the region are strong, safe, and healthy, not just some, but all. We're also very focused on understanding and keeping in mind that we're not talking about ending homelessness. We might end homelessness for some people, but we won't end homelessness necessarily forever in the region. What we can do, though, through these regional coordinated efforts, is that when homelessness does occur, is to make sure that it's brief, it's one-time, and it's rare, and that it doesn't happen to as many people, but when it does, we can provide support, and we can provide support quickly, and they can maintain that level of stability in the long term. Next slide, please. This is a process then that we've used to develop the work so far. We started working with local communities, really partnering with local communities as a foundation for this work. So we developed an inventory of more than 300 different strategies that are in use right now by local communities. We wanted to learn from the best of what's working right here throughout the region. We also wanted to learn from the best of what's working throughout the country as it pertained to regional approaches to homelessness. We then developed 40 different possible regional strategies, and then through additional research and outreach, were able to identify the 14 most viable opportunities for action for this region. That regional portfolio was accepted by Regional Council last month. Next slide, please. Moving forward then, and the outreach has been critical to hear from diverse people, because homelessness was not caused by any one sector, nor can it be solved by any one sector. Next slide, please. And so outreach has been critical to this effort. Want to thank Mayor Giles for speaking at the Capstone event just earlier this month. It's been a long month, but we've held more than, we've held 10 different forums, and then in addition, the Capstone event. The Capstone event, we had 245 people attend that event, which was amazing. We had a number of mayors, council members, a number of you attended, thank you so much, and a number of your staff attended that as well. Through the 10 previous forums, we've reached out to more than 700 people from diverse sectors. Very much want to thank the partners who helped make these forums possible, and to thank all of the attendees. This was our main conduit to ensure that what we're doing is responsive and relevant to you and local communities. And I would like to highlight two forums, in particular, the Faith Forum and the Business Forum. With the Business Forum, we partnered very closely with East Valley Partnership, and really benefited from their expertise in this space. And the Faith Forum, Faith Partners and the Places of Worship are important partners in this work, but they're not always fully leveraged or fully integrated into these efforts. And so with all of this work, it's critically important to draw expertise from a variety of different sectors, so we can have a more holistic response to homelessness. Next slide, please. We've also conducted a number of surveys at the regional level to make sure that we're operating a number of opportunities for people to provide their input. And so, for example, we sent surveys to law enforcement, because your law enforcement needs to be out in your communities, keeping you safe, and not sitting in front of a computer, participating in a virtual forum necessarily, although we welcome that participation as well. I know the city of Mesa has also done surveys in this work to better understand the priorities of Mesa residents, and so more than 60% of the people living in Mesa cited strategies for reducing homelessness as among their highest priority in community policing programs, and also significant interest in having police and non-police alternatives address mental health and substance use calls together. So you're hearing from your residents what their priorities are, and we're hearing from you what your priorities are, so we can incorporate those and integrate those into these regional efforts moving forward. Next slide, please. Data, it's okay. So data analysis has been really key to all of this work, and so we've conducted a number of different analyses of various sources. Next slide, please. Not to go into all of them, but we did have an extensive lit review, so we can learn from what work has already been done in this space. We've also been analyzing possible funding sources, so looking at the funding sources, but then also looking at the community level, what investments are you already making in addressing homelessness? Understanding that helps us to better understand what additional investments might need to be made to fully implement the strategies and tactics that are being identified. We also conducted a study to really deeply understand what considerations do communities need to take into account when launching new homeless assistance programs. We want to make sure that particularly as communities are perhaps entering this space for the first time, we want to make sure that they're successful, and to make sure they have the tools that they need. Next slide, please. So moving into the regional strategies, next slide, please. We've identified, again, 14 different strategies, all organized within these five different categories. These categories were identified, as were the strategies, on the basis of extensive research and outreach. And a few examples then is increasing the supply and the geographic dispersion of shelters and temporary housing, really looking at, creating pathways to housing everything from pre-shelter to bridge housing to permanent supportive housing, and then being able to enter market housing on their own with or without subsidies. Also, some strategies are already in place. So the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care, for example, is already fully implementing four out of the 14 strategies, particularly as it pertains to racial equity. And then Maricopa County, for example, is moving forward already on a regional landlord engagement strategy. So there's a lot of really, really good work already underway. As a region, the goal then is to come together and move forward together on the remaining strategies. Next slide, please. So the next steps, they are underway right now, as well as imminently will be underway within the next few months. Next slide, please. One of those is to make sure that you have access to all of the data that's been gathered as a result of this regional effort that's available to you for your local planning. So we have a hand-up tool, it's an interactive mapping tool, and it contains a homelessness assets and needs data for unified planning. So you'll see on the slide in front of you right now, the assets for addressing homelessness, there are a variety in many different ways, everything from housing to shelter to programs that help people to get their identification. So looking at every possible angle from mental health to substance use, making sure that we're addressing people's needs in a holistic way. The map also includes the populations of people who are currently experiencing homelessness, as well as those who may be at risk, drawing on some of the data sources that we've covered early in our presentation. If we click forward onto that next slide, please. When you access this tool, and that link is available to you on the screen, we'd be happy to provide you with a password. Right now, we are keeping it password-protected, because we want to make sure that we have your full feedback regarding these assets, as well as the need, and then once everything is truly fine-tuned and ready for public use, then we'll have a public version of this as well. But right now, we will provide you the password, and when you click on one of those icons, you'll see really good data that's been populated from 211, as well as from our housing inventory chart that's assembled by the Continuum of Care. You'll be able to go directly to the website. We're receiving very, very good feedback on this tool, and understanding that this is being used already to support local planning purposes, and we're using it very much so for these regional purposes as well, in particular, helping us to understand where are the assets, where are the needs, and then how do we address those gaps together? Next slide, please. So then as we move forward, we have a meeting on July 1st. Your staff are attending to take a look at the regional funding targets and scenarios that we've developed. So we've been working very closely with Solari Crisis and Human Services, as well as the Corporation for Supportive Housing and ASU, to really understand and to be able to have a data-driven approach to project the number of people who will be in need, and then to be able to project the number of shelter beds and housing units that will be required to meet those needs, to be able to keep them stably housed. So we now have that data, we'll be sharing that data next week, and are eager to receive feedback on that. We're also continuing to use local current data to develop a cost analysis. So we'll be able to offer you a calculator, so if you want to, for example, provide 100 housing units, we'll be able to tell you how much that will cost, and it's based on local current data that reflects this market. And so we're thankful to all of our partners who are helping to provide data to inform this work, and we'll be able to share the results of that analysis next week, and then next month then be able to pivot and to start working with a regional team to really identify the tactics that can be put into place in communities and throughout the region, then to fill those needs, to address those gaps. We'll be continuing to fine-tune that hand-up tool that I just shared with you, we're eager for your feedback on that. Please let us know what additional functionality you might want to see in that tool to serve your needs at the local planning level. You'll be able to run reports and print maps and do a variety of different things with that data. We did just have the Capstone event earlier this month. I just previewed the initial draft of the report, and we are refining that, and we'll be able to analyze that. With 245 people attending, they generated a tremendous amount of really good insights and data that we'll be using to identify the actions that we can take as a region together. So you'll see an initial timeline for the development of that action plan. In June, we are completing the regional analysis. In July and August, we'll be working regionally and with individual communities to identify how they might want to contribute to these efforts, how they might benefit from these efforts, and then in September, developing the action plan, offering that for robust review and feedback, and then in October, starting to move that through the MAG committee process for action. So with the strategy portfolio, that went first to the MAG Management Committee, which includes your city manager, as well as the others throughout the region, then it goes to the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care Board, and then to Regional Council, which of course includes your mayor. And so we're excited to be able to move forward with this work, but we understand that we can only do so in an effective way by hearing your concerns, your priorities. So we very much want to thank you for partnering with us. Mesa has been an incredible partner through all these efforts. Natalie, in particular, has been a great resource to us, and we've really benefited from her participation, as well as from your ongoing feedback. So you have my direct phone number and my email address. I provide it because I'd love for you to use it. Please do feel free to reach out at any time with your feedback, your ideas, your questions. Your feedback really helps us to calibrate these regional efforts to support your local efforts here within the city of Mesa, understanding that Mesa is already a leader in this space, and it's our goal to have every community be a strong, safe, and healthy community alongside the city of Mesa. That concludes my formal presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you might have at this time. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much, Amy. And I'm sure we have more than a few questions for you. Mr. Thompson.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Manager Brady for making this a regional discussion, because I've been all about making this a regional discussion since we started talking about taking on the homeless population. And one of the things that I get stuck on looking at your map, and when I look at the vulnerable households, you're identifying areas within, at least within my district and District 6, where there's, I mean, for example, you're showing 21% to 25% vulnerable households in areas where there are no houses. You have more than 45% for areas where there's a mall and there's no housing. You have Gateway Airport, 41% to 45%, and there's only a small, other than House of Refuge, student housing, and some other stuff out there, there is no other housing out there. But you painted the entire Gateway Airport as vulnerable households, and that's not And so I get stuck on how accurate is your data when your maps aren't accurate? Arizona 211 calls requesting housing assistance, again, you're showing south of the 24 where there is no housing. You were able to put white in areas where there, you know, that's county or Tonto Forest or what have you. But there's areas that I know for a fact there is no housing in my district, but yet it's called out as anywhere between 1 to 150 calls for requesting housing assistance when there is no housing. And so I get stuck believing the data when the maps aren't correct. And so how do I know that the data is correct? And then the other thing is, you know, I talk to our police officers a lot, and the majority, they tell me that, you know, anywhere between 90, 98% of the homeless folks that they encounter, when they ask them if they want help or if they need direction to services, they tell them in a not-so-nice manner, "No, go away, leave me alone." So what do we do with those folks? I mean, we can trespass them, we can arrest them and force them into community court, but at the end of the day, if they choose that lifestyle, you're not going to change that lifestyle. And so that's, you know, the time in count study that we do, I think, is a lot of those frequent flyers, for the lack of a better term. What do you do with that group of people that end up being the ones that are consistently, that we're consistently trying to help, that don't want help? And we just, irregardless of what we do, they're not going to change their ways. And I had this discussion with Mark Young with the Mason United Way, and is it easier to put the funds towards keeping people housed before they go into homelessness, or are we better off trying to get the people that are already homeless back into some type of housing? And I think those are two separate tasks that have to be looked at. And, you know, and Mark Young said, "Yeah, we should be putting all of our efforts into keeping people housed before they lose their housing," because once they hit the street, it's hard to get them off the street and back into housing, because they've already entered that lifestyle, and whether it's mental health issues or drug issues or what have you, they get stuck in that cycle, and then they refuse to come back to being a sustainable member of the community. They just, they choose to be homeless. So how do we tackle those things or those types of issues when you have somebody that doesn't want help, refuses help, but then we're looking at it going, "Yeah, we got to help them."
Councilmember Thompson and Mayor and Council, thank you very much for those questions. I appreciate the opportunity to have this dialogue with you and to be able to respond to your concerns. First about the map, I will follow up with our staff and be able to respond as to the reasons why the map was developed that way, and if there has been a mistake, then we'd be happy to correct that. That's one of the reasons why it helps so much to be able to have this conversation. We want to make sure that our data are absolutely correct. We do have a thorough review process, but being able to hear from communities regarding their data really helps us to be able to fine-tune that data. So I can assure you that we will have a high level of quality, and feedback like this does help us to attain that and then to maintain that. So we'll absolutely follow up with you in terms of why high-need areas are showing up when there doesn't appear to be housing in that area, so we will absolutely follow up with you on that point. In regard to the 98% not wanting help, that is absolutely a challenge and very frustrating. There are a number of reasons why people will say no. When I first came to the valley almost 30 years ago, my first job was in homelessness, and worked in homelessness for a number of years, so I've been in the field and heard the no, and been so frustrated, like, "But we can help you, just come with me, we can help," and to get that no just doesn't seem at all logical. When you consider their perspective, there are a number of reasons why people might say When you consider their perspective, there are a number of reasons why people might say no. So sometimes, for example, people who have experienced homelessness, particularly if they've been on the streets for a long time, they've experienced high levels of trauma. And that trauma has resulted in them having extremely low levels of trust. And so to have someone come up and offer them help, maybe they're thinking, "Yeah, I've heard that before," and they don't trust it, they don't believe it. To mitigate that, because that is very much a challenge that we experience all the time when working out in the field, it's critical to bring in outreach teams to establish a relationship, to start to build up that level of trust and so they'll believe you. And you have extremely good officers here, you have extremely good partners who are out in the fields building those relationships. But it is extremely frustrating and common to hear no. But trauma and lack of trust is one of the reasons why. Some other reasons why people might say no, sometimes it's a very tempered choice. So if they're being offered assistance, for example, and they don't perceive or it may not be possible, in most cases it's not possible, for them to enter with their partner. They don't want to be split up. So that can be a reason why someone would say no. And sometimes people will say no because most often you can't bring a pet. And I know it might sound trivial and saying, "Well, your safety is more important than a pet." But when everyone else has turned their back on you and the only living being in the world that still cares about you, has stayed with you, is that pet, then you're not going to leave that pet. So people will often say no because they can't bring their pet. And so more and more communities, including Mesa, are really looking at how do we accommodate the pet in a safe way to remove one of those barriers? Another reason why people might say no is because they want to bring their belongings. And to us, we might look at a shopping cart, for example, and say, "Well, that's not anything of consequence." But to them, it's everything and the only thing that they have in the world. That's another reason why people might say no. Sometimes people might also say no because they're dealing with mental health issues and substance use issues, particularly when we look at the number of low-barrier shelters. So the shelters that don't have any rules to coming in. And it might sound, and it can be controversial to have a low-barrier shelter, particularly if people are actively using substances in that shelter. That can be a hard sell for a lot of people and very understandably so. But we know from research, we know from experience, that people are much more likely to stabilize and to become clean and sober if they have housing or shelter of some kind. And so if somebody's saying, "Yeah, I tried to get into the shelter, but I know I'm not going to pass the drug test." Or sometimes we'll hear that people are saying no to shelter, but they might perceive it as a very large shelter with a lot of noise and for their mental health issues, it's not a good fit. And so there are many, many reasons why people might say no. And it's always frustrating and it's always challenging. And so there's a lot of ways that we can remove those barriers, but it takes time and it takes really intentional action. But it is very frustrating, so I hear you on that. And a lot of communities are seeing that as well. And so through this regional work, we're trying to remove the barriers that people might have or perceive to entering shelter. Because once they're in shelter, they can stabilize, they can meet their mental health needs, they can address their substance use issues, and they can start to build their way back to a really stable, healthy lifestyle. So I hear you on that frustration. It is real and people do say no all the time. It's for a number of very different, sometimes very valid reasons.
And Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, I'll just add to that from Mesa's perspective. You can see that it's a much more complicated issue than somebody just chooses. And in fact, in our discussions with the homeless or people experiencing homelessness, probably one or two out of 10 really do want to stick to that lifestyle. The rest of them have answers and responses to what Amy just talked about. So our focus has been on trying to remove those barriers. And so at the hotel on Operation Off the Streets, we're actually preparing some rooms that will allow for pets because we have seen that as a huge barrier. And so we're lucky, we have this great partner. And the other thing that's been great about Off the Streets, and you all have been so supportive of that and thank you, and we want to continue that program, is the fact that we're actually getting people off the streets without any major rules. So they can come in and we can talk to them and interview them, we can find out really how serious they are to recover and what we could do to help them. And as you do that and as they're around other people who are seeing some progress, it's helpful to them. You know, rather than being, living on the streets with people who choose the lifestyle and are saying, "Oh, don't do it because this is the best lifestyle you'll ever have." So it's changing, it's turning the page and it's helping to get people in that ready spot. And so that's what we've been doing to try to address that very frustrating issue.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Amy and Natalie. It's always great to see you, Amy, you know, not at MAG office, but here in the city of Mesa. So thank you for your support. Now, you know, I really appreciate, I don't know if it's you, Mayor, or Mr. Brady, that made the decision to make this a regional issue, because it truly is a regional issue. We can't do it by ourselves. Mesa has taken the burden for many, many years. And the fact, it's a regional issue and we have to deal with it that way. So thank you so much and I appreciate the intelligent approach in terms of how we begin to deal with our homelessness. Now, as far as contributions from other communities, what are they doing? Are they using their funds? What kind of, how does that happen? And can we use some of our rescue dollars as we move forward in this plan of action?
Absolutely. Mayor, Council, and Councilmember Luna, thank you very much for that question. We are working with communities to answer that question right now. And so communities are contributing in different ways. Some are actively using and have already committed their COVID relief funding and so that's very much in play. Other communities, for example, are using their general funds. And so they're using their general funds, for example, to subsidize their housing vouchers because the housing vouchers aren't enough to cover the market rent, given the increase in costs that we've been experiencing. Other communities are putting money into activities that really serve their very specific needs, such as clearing out riverbeds and being able to clean it up and to maintain a high level of visibility, you know? And so this work really manifests very differently. Others are very much involved through their partnerships, through their support of nonprofit agencies. And so over the summer then, we'll be identifying what are the best ways for communities to participate in these regional efforts. We're also looking to a variety of different kinds of funding sources regionally. So for example, Access has millions of dollars already funded, already committed to addressing the services that people need when they're experiencing homelessness. That money is already in place. So we're partnering with them to be able to leverage that deep investment and to be able to put that into play in the most positive ways and in the most effective manner. There are other private donors who are also approaching us and we are meeting with them as well. That includes donors who want to contribute money as well as donors who might want to contribute land. The Bureau of Land Management also has parcels that can be leased out at amazingly affordable rates, like $2 an acre, and those sites could also be used. So we have a variety of different partners who are participating in a variety of different ways and really looking at how can we leverage each other's investments and how can we coordinate those investments as well? And so we're seeing more and more partnerships, for example, between two different funders. One is funding the capital, one is funding the services. And being able to make smart investments like that really helps us to be able to expand what we're able to do together.
Great. And I really got excited with the emergent strategies and regional portfolio. And one that really struck me was diversion and prevention activities. And I'm wondering if the city, our city, could come up with some ideas, how we can come up with a plan to use some of our rescue dollars to create these opportunities for those individuals that find themselves homeless. And I guess I would refer that to you.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, yes, absolutely. And this really kind of goes to Councilmember Thompson's question as well as how do we really kind of help people stay in their homes? And I've heard very loudly and clearly from the council that that is a priority that you have. And so we are looking at those strategies. I mean, how do we work with the constables' offices, for example, or attorneys who are going through eviction processes and work with those families that are vulnerable or will be evicted at some point to find substitute housing that they can land in and then move into our program? So we are looking at those kinds of programs and we'll be bringing some additional ideas to you after the break.
Great. The other thing, I was troubled when I saw that the availability of apartment units with rent under $1,000. And, you know, when I first got on council, there was a lot of light tech opportunities in the city of Mesa. There hasn't been any lately that I am aware of. Why can't we explore that? And I know there's been, it's been controversial, particularly in the west side of the community, but I've always said, certainly why don't we look at Central Mesa and look at East Mesa as a possibility of creating those kind of incentives? And what happened with that? Why, is there no interest in the development community? Is it a transportation issue?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, thank you for bringing that up. I think that it's a combination of things, but I also do think that communities or developers who are building affordable housing want to make sure that the government supports it. And I think they've, you know, heard a lot of negative feedback from our community. And so there's concern there. But I don't think that would stop them from coming to Mesa and so we can absolutely work with developers and bring forward some of those types of projects.
Because I know there was a developer in East Mesa, I think it was Hoz and Broadway or Hoz and Southern. And certainly the transportation issue is something. But they were willing, they were going to provide transportation from that hill, if you will, to power roads so individuals wanting to get on the bus could hop on the bus. So I think that we need to create those kind of incentives. Even apartment complexes coming into City Mesa devote a portion of that to support our homeless population in those areas. But I think we need to explore that as a council as moving forward because we're going to have homeless people here. And it's very, and as you can see on this slide, you know, it continues to be very expensive and we need to provide those opportunities. So I would challenge us to look at that moving forward.
Thank you. And we will be having a more in-depth conversation as the city brings forward the balanced housing plan as far as it's going to be part of the general plan update.
Because I remember, you know, Natalie, and you and I have been working on this for many years, we would have developers using some of the home funds as an incentive. And I don't know if the state does that.
They do.
Continue to support those efforts.
I think what happened, Mayor and Council, I think we went through that period where we had, we were getting a lot of requests.
Yeah.
And I think the message was sent to the developers, we didn't want any more concentrated.
Right.
And the challenge was because a lot of the scoring had to do with, you keep mentioning it, access to transportation, I think that had a strong influence. And so, well, I haven't been approached by any, I mean, I haven't heard of any developers who have asked and been interested recently, at least not at my level. But I think that there was a great concern by the reaction from many of the neighborhoods.
Right.
Where there was, because of the concentration in West Mesa and because they were all trying to get as close to light rail as possible to get the points that they needed to qualify and just finding available property, right? It's not just, you can't just say, "Come" and it'll happen because there has to be a place for it to happen. So, and I don't know how much that's playing into it, but, you know, you have to go through a zoning change for many of these properties. And then, of course, then you have to notify the residents and then that can become a challenge also.
But I did like what Amy said about BLM land availability and for $2.
Yeah, but I think the challenge, Amy, there is that it's pretty remote. I mean, it's pretty far away, right, from access to, you know, I think our challenge is, we've always said, is if we're going to do services, we can't isolate them and we have to have the ability to provide or have access to wraparound services, right? And that's what we're happening out at in Far, in East Mesa, where we're doing the Off the Streets program, is we're having to bring and make sure we have those other services because otherwise you're just creating a formula for failure. Because you're just putting someone in shelter, but you're not providing any, if you're not being able to connect to other services that are needed, you know, food security, job training, getting their IDs, you know, all those things, then you really haven't really accomplished much. So we're trying to figure out how to balance all those things out.
Right. And I know working with the New Leave and Save the Family, they provide those services.
No, they do. It's just that we have to be, the question is, is how do you create, disperse the services so they're not concentrated one area? And you've got to get New Leave, Save the Family, and other nonprofits to also kind of come with you if we're going to disperse it too.
Yeah. But I think that's something we need to explore moving forward, so, thank you.
I know we've got other council members with questions, but just to respond to Mr. Luna's questions about why are we not seeing light tech housing developments in the city of Mesa in the last few years? There's a new state housing director, Tom Simplot, great guy, reached out to me about a month ago. I got him on a Zoom call with Michelle Albinisi, our housing director, and we had that conversation. And what we both said to him is we want to dispel the impression that Mesa is not supportive of light tech housing. We are. And particularly, we want to encourage that in parts of Mesa that are underserved with that type of housing, meaning the east side. And so we had, it was a very productive conversation. If you don't mind, I'm going to invite Michelle to come back later, not now, because we're pressed for time, to talk about the topic of what do we need to do to encourage more light tech housing, particularly in the underserved parts of our community. So thank you. Ms. Spilsbury and then Frankie.
My question's about this, this is what I was going to bring up. Thank you, by the way, for all of the work that you've done. And I love that you're putting a face on each of these people because they each have an individual story and so that's what makes it so complicating. But I, Slide 10 also was a huge concern to me. I appreciate that we're going to have conversations and that we're going to talk about this, but what can we do right now? My Facebook feed right now is full of people trying to find a place to live. The median one-bedroom apartment is going for $1,100 and you have to make quite a bit more, $18, $19, you know, an hour to be able to have that be less than 30% of your income. And so I know my, one of my adopted daughters and her husband, they are having to leave their current housing because a family member of the owner needs it. So they're, she just can't find anything in their price range. They'll probably end up in my basement before they end up on the streets. But it is a huge concern. Another friend is a single mom with four kids, cannot find anything in Mesa or in the Valley. So what are we doing? Like, what can we do right now? What, what are the talks at a regional level that we can do instead of waiting? Right now, we know there's a housing crisis, so.
Absolutely. Councilmember Spilsbury, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for that question. We absolutely share that concern as well. It's good news for the property owners when the market goes up like that, but it is absolutely concerning for people who are just right on the cusp of losing their homes. And we anticipate that we'll see more losing their homes as a result of the market increasing like this. I think that Mesa's work on having a balanced housing plan is critical. I think that will yield a number of really important benefits. The investments that you're already making in terms of the rental assistance, I think, is very, very important as well. We do need more affordable housing, we need a more balanced portfolio of housing options for people. And a number of communities, and Natalie can talk to Mesa's work in this, but are being really proactive about making that assistance available upfront as a prevention strategy and really making that the cornerstone, the main strategy for housing, for how they're using their relief funding right now. It's important to address the immediate need as well as then to plan for how we're going to address those needs on a long-term basis to make sure that we have a sustainable portfolio of options in place. And so I think that rental assistance is absolutely critical. Also, engaging more landlords, Maricopa County is doing a lot right now to engage more landlords to encourage them to accept vouchers, for example. And I think that work is very, very important. Sometimes we'll find that landlords don't want to because it's not viable on a financial basis for them, so that's where the additional subsidy can come into play. The city of Scottsdale, for example, is supplementing the funding that's available for their housing vouchers because they know that it doesn't cover the market rent. Other communities are really, I'm looking intently at how do they recruit more landlords to engage? Because sometimes even when the finances pencil out, there's still a perception of those people, you know? And so it's working with the landlords, providing the education, and then also putting flexible funding in place to make sure that if, for example, a landlord does have a negative experience and they incur damages, then that flexible funding can be used to make that landlord whole. And so there's strategies needed at each level. And some of them are in play right now, such as the landlord engagement strategy through the county. And then, and then local communities also have some strategies in place right now as well. But on a regional basis, you are right, we need to provide just a better mix of housing options for people to ensure that they don't lose their home and start living on the streets. Thank you.
And Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, one of the things we are working on is something that Amy talked about, which we're calling a landlord incentive program. So we do want to be able to provide a financial backstop and some assurances to them. So if they do have a negative experience, we can help make them whole in exchange for that, that they are willing to take our vouchers and willing to use our rent assistance. And so we're working to do that in Mesa as well.
Frankie.
Yeah, question on, thank you for the information. When we, what does a court's and law enforcement strategies look like in the regional plan? Because I think that's one of the main hubs here as far as what we can do to, you know, our community court system, I think, has been working. Not sure if other communities are implementing strategies like that. The Navigator program in our police in our police department, and so are, are other communities conducting similar strategies? And how's that play into this plan? And then second, what's the metrics of what you're looking at, at the end of the day of, you know, you mentioned, we won't solve homelessness, right? But there's, there's got to be some metrics that we need to look at over the next several years on what we're doing to, you know, have folks not fall into homelessness or, or take folks throughout the ladder of engagement to, to solve their, their issues, those that want to. So what are the metrics within this plan that you're looking at to, to be successful, I guess, so?
Yes. Councilmember, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for that question. Two, two very important topics there. The first was in regard to your question about, about law enforcement. There are some very, very good practices in place locally that we're wanting to lift up regionally. One of those is a misdemeanor repeat offender program. And there are some communities that, that have that in place right now, but, but, but not many. But I think all could really benefit from that. It's particularly important to have a consistent response from law enforcement, really for at least two reasons. One is because what law enforcement does in one community affects an immediate community next to it. So if, for example, one community is just, their law enforcement is just kind of moving people out, then they're just going to move them out into the next community. And that doesn't really benefit anybody in a long-term fashion. The other is that while it's not law enforcement's primary function to address homelessness, they're very often the first point of contact. And so we need a consistent, effective response. Law enforcement, particularly your law enforcement department, is, they're absolute experts in this. They're doing very, very good work in this space. And so we're wanting to look at what, for example, that law enforcement is doing within the City of Mesa and then offer those as best practices to the rest of the region. Because they are that first point of contact and they're in a unique role then to be able to connect people experiencing homelessness with those really needed services, to build up that relationship, increase levels of trust, and really be able to make some demonstrated progress in that space. So lots of really good work in that, in that space. Metrics, very, very important to this. We want to make sure that we can measure the success of what we're doing. One, that helps us to communicate the, the success, but it also helps us to identify when mid-course corrections are needed. And so for, so each tactic will have a measurable outcome and that will be varied according to what that tactic is, is intending to do. One example, though, that I can offer right now, we are developing the scenarios and we're developing the scenarios on the basis of reducing homelessness by 25% and by 50% in three main areas. In terms of reducing unchilled homelessness, because often when communities get phone calls about homelessness, it's, hey, I don't feel safe going to my park because I think there's people there who are homeless. Those are calls that are often received and we want to be able to address that to support communities as well as supporting the people who are experiencing homelessness. The other, the, the other reduction that we're looking at is reducing family homelessness. Family homelessness is a high priority. We have really, really good work in place already in that area. We need to bring it to the next level. So unchilled, family, and then chronic. We're hearing from people that substance use and mental health issues are a primary concern. People experiencing chronic homelessness or homelessness over an extended period of time will have mental health issues and substance use issues. So we want to be able to indicate for all three of those different populations, how many beds and housing units are needed and what will it cost? And so we'll be able to share that, that analysis next Thursday. But then for each metric, then, we'll, we'll have more, more, more specific measures. But in general, we're looking at a 25% and a 50% reduction principally in those three areas. The reason why it's not 100% is because we know that we're not going to reach 100% of the people. We will have people for a variety of different reasons still saying no. And so we want this work to be realistic. We want it to be useful. And so that's why we're looking at the 25% and 50%. We'll be offering that to the municipal human services directors throughout the region for their feedback and look forward to any ways that we can strengthen this analysis, make sure that it is sound and accurate, and then provide that to all the communities.
And just to follow up on the, on the county assets, like the justice courts, which handle a lot of the evictions, I think with the moratorium ending, is there any specific strategy in the short term to work with the justice courts and local communities in coordination with them to figure out something? I know some of the, the, the carriage funding has helped, but I, I think the numbers will be significant coming forward. So is there any strategies there?
Councilmember, Mayor and Council, yes, absolutely. Some communities are doing that work already. For example, I was talking with the municipal human services director last week and she was already calling her local court to find out how many and if possible who, so she could reach out to them in advance, to be able to make the assistance available to them before they were locked out and, and essentially living on the streets. We are looking at a variety of different mechanisms. The Rental, Rental Assistance Collaborative is another effort underway through the Virginia G. Piper Charitable Trust and Villas Health Foundation. And they're working very intently with landlords, with, with the community to make the word, to, to spread the word through, I think it's easyevictionhelp.org to let people know that help is available and, and how they can access that, that assistance. That question reminded me about your question about the community courts. I was actually just talking to a mayor yesterday. He had not heard of community courts before. He was thrilled to find out about it. And so I was going to talk to Natalie after this meeting to see if we could connect Mesa with this other community because you're doing really excellent work in that space. So there are a few communities that have the, the community courts or, or, or the homelessness courts. More communities need them, frankly. And so we want to make sure they have access to that, to that information as well as possible technical assistance.
And just one other thing on the transportation side, in, you know, in, in order for us to kind of spread the, the services, because I think predominantly when you look at this map, it's Phoenix, Tempe, and Mesa that are taking the brunt. And we, I think moving forward, we still will see that based on just the geography, just based on the density, the services, the transportation piece. But I think transportation is, is also an important leg to look in. Maybe there are other private partnerships, private-public partnerships with entities like Lyft and Uber and others to provide services that if we spread out, you know, housing or spread out hotel usage to other communities around the region, be a truly regional approach. I think transportation is going to be a key aspect. And we, sometimes we forget that piece, right? We want to, we want to provide the transit piece, which is why there are a lot of services are in these density parts, but providing other strategies to provide transportation, not necessarily transit per se, but other opportunities for transportation that we can think about as far as strategies to assist folks to get where they need to be for a job or their courts or wherever they need to go to school is going to be an important aspect of how we as communities fund and, and, you know, the county and the state and municipalities. So I'll just add to that point.
Now, Councilmember, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for that point. We absolutely agree. Transportation is, is a key concern in this as well because that's how we get anywhere for, for any of us, really. So as a result, the hand-up map, the, the mapping tool that I shared with you, that does have a layer that, that you can click and you can see all of the, the light rail lines as well as all of the fixed route bus lines as well. And so as you're planning at the local level, you can identify, all right, this area has transit, this, this could really be, be viable. And look, the needs there, the other assets are here, this would be a really good location. Or this is a gap and this is where we need to invest additional resources and/or planning to be able to, to meet that need. So absolutely agree, transportation is a critical component to all of this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Sure, I'll say a few things. Thank you very much, first of all, thank you very much, Amy, for all your work on this. It's been so enormous and so many different entities and organizations and municipalities. And you covered many of them in your slide, but thank you for this work and pulling us all together because the, the problem is so enormous that we all, at every level and every organization, need to work together to do this. A lot of citizens see homelessness as a failure of our city. But I just want to say that it's an enormous problem for a number of reasons. First of all, we have a lot of people living here, moving in here. We have a shortage of housing. We're the number one as far as percent of rent increase over the past year, the wages, as you said. And so all of these lead to an increased number of homelessness. And I think we're doing remarkably well and we have a long ways still to go. And, and we are doing a lot for homeless. So just to let people know, we are making strides, but because it is so enormous, we have so much more to do. And it's so important that we allocate our resources and funding and staffing and able to address this is probably maybe the largest problem in our region that we're facing. And we often see the chronic homeless. We often see the person maybe in the park that has been homeless for a long time. But the problem is much, much larger than that. We have families who are living out of cars. There's the, the surfing on couches. They are the unseen homeless that would do anything to be able to find the resources in order to get housed. So there might be some resistant, but that is a small percentage to the majority that need the assistance. And the only way we're going to achieve that is through the regional abilities, putting our, our hearts and our minds and our resources together in order to do that. I know we've identified at Mesa the need for that bridge housing, just to get in that first step to stabilize. And when they do that, then they're on their way and we, it's very effective. So I know that with some, maybe our federal funding combined with the other cities, that we can do some projects like that as well as having a holistic approach on how everybody can participate in the problem. Do we have any strategies with our eviction courts as far as their, you know, do they give out information? Do they have ways of maybe trying to give maybe a little bit of a delay to keep them housed? Do we, are we pretty much static in the way we address that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, currently what we're doing is working with the courts and the constables through our emergency rental and assistance program. So basically what we're trying to do is make absolutely certain that every single family that is in that process or is in fear of losing their housing, we want them to know about the programs that we have, that we can help keep them in their housing. So, so right now, that is our focus. You know, down the road, it could be more of a diversion specialist and, you know, maybe we have specialists throughout the county or, you know, that are regionally based, working with the justice courts and doing exactly that for the long term. We're also working with Mesa Public Schools and other districts because, you know, like Amy talked about earlier, trust is, is very difficult sometimes to earn with this particular population of people. And school districts and teachers and those officials, they're well-loved and they're more trusted than anyone. And they know exactly which children are, are vulnerable and living in that situation. And, and you're right, those, those are the families, they want to find housing. They, they don't want to lose their children. And so we do work with them and have some navigation in that, in that area and that space. And, and I would recommend, your friend, to get them to call Save the Family because Save the Family has funding and the ability to place families that are in that situation.
The last thing I'd like to say, which I feel our hands are tied at the city level because of state regulations, mandates, whatever, inclusionary zoning, that we cannot require that developers maybe have 10% of what they're building in a new complex be affordable, something like that. There are some measures in just how we build and allowing density and infill. There's a lot of things that happen that I wish we could change at the state level to allow municipalities to do some things with their development community in order to address it. But I feel that that has to be part of the equation too, because we're mandated with these certain regulations, yet we're the ones dealing with the homeless population. And I just feel like we need to make some strides in our legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Freeman, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. You know, I've learned a lot with what you've talked about this morning. And, you know, I think kudos to Mesa because they've done a super job, all the staff for many, many years in navigating the homeless issue and social services within our community. And, and so it comes back, you know, we talk about this regional strategy, yet do we have regional players? I know that you're pursuing that, but why can't we leverage the experience that Mesa's, our, our housing department and others to reach out to other communities? Because what I, what I don't, I'm uncomfortable with is other communities paying Mesa to house some of their, you know, homelessness or whatever, to help them become better, which I'm all for, but we need to spread this out within our community because in my district, I, my neighborhoods feel like there's an over-concentration of social services. And, and, but we have a great asset called the Light Rail to help facilitate a lot of the help and transport of people getting out of homelessness or, or just finding a job and helping with our other social services and businesses. So I think that we need to leverage our experience in, again, in our community to go out to other communities and help them. You know, maybe they have to increase their personnel and their housing departments to become strong. And we spread this out throughout our neighbors. You mentioned one thing about one city using general funds to subsidize, you know, their housing, which Mesa's kind of constrained. We have three funding mechanisms and one, one-third of that money is earmarked already. Our enterprise money is earmarked for our general fund, so we only have two-thirds of that money available and we're subject to our shared use funds and as well as our sales tax revenue. So I'd be concerned about if that ever happened in our budget, but I think it, it comes to, one thing you didn't mention is, and maybe, I know this is a high-level overview, but the percent of people that you actually take out of homelessness and you help them, whether it's a family or an individual. And so that's something that I think that I would like to see as a data or a metric is how successful are you in helping people get out of these cycles? So with that, I, I just want to make sure that we don't burden our neighborhoods and our public safety departments. They do an excellent job, but yet we need to, we need to stay on top of it. So I'll end with that. Thanks, Mayor.
Got it.
And Councilmember, oh, Mayor?
No, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Completely agree. It's been a focus. So, so you raised two issues. One is about the metrics and, and the data. And we are very much looking at performance data. So for example, some of the more recent models where people experiencing homelessness are being temporarily housed in, in hotels, in, 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 in the hotel rooms, we're seeing 80% positive exits from that. So very promising, much higher sometimes than, than, than some other models. And so we're really, in particular, looking at the models that are producing very good outcomes and wanting to replicate those and wanting to understand what contributes to their success. So very much tracking those metrics and we'd be happy to share those with you. In, in regard to your first point about spreading the, the responsibility, we completely agree. That's why one of the three main areas of focus has been increasing access to homeless assistance programs throughout the entire region. That accomplishes a few very important goals. One, it helps people to stabilize more quickly because when people can access help where they are, they can stabilize much more quickly as well as more effectively. It also reduces a burden on, on other communities who are, who are serving more than their residents. At our capstone event recently, we heard from Trevor Southwick, a remarkable young man who was experiencing homelessness in, in an outlying community. And he has substance use issues and for, for a number of different reasons. And it, it took him a long time to stabilize. And it took a long, it took him a long time to say yes, to help. He couldn't get it in an outlying community. Now, there's some outlying communities who are really doing just remarkable work, but there are opportunities in many communities to, to do more. And so we want to make sure that, that all communities have some kind of role in this regional work. And that will look different depending on the needs of their residents and the priorities of their councils. But really, all communities can, can do something in this regard. And so we offer the invitation to every community throughout the region and say, ready to support them in any way. Thank you. And Mayor, if I may to just respond to a comment from, from, from Vice Mayor Duff, completely agree about needing a legislative strategy as well. So we have, we've had that on our radar since the beginning of these efforts and in particular, really looking to the state. We're very excited with Director Simplot now heading up the, the Department of Housing. We've also reached out to Director Snyder from Access as well as the Director of DES. And we'll be working very closely with them to explore how the state might be more involved in, in helping address homelessness and to support local communities because there are a number of decisions that are out of our hands at the local level. of decisions that are out of our hands at the local level and even at the regional level. And we need the state to really partner with us, not just in terms of providing funding, but sometimes just taking off, taking out the barriers that communities face when addressing homelessness. Thank you.
That's wonderful news, and I would put a shout out also for restoring the Housing Trust Fund fully. Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. This is obviously a sobering topic, but oddly, I can't help but be a little encouraged because we've got Natalie and Amy and very talented people at the city and regional level that are working very, very hard on this. I had the pleasure yesterday of getting the gavel at the MAG Regional Council meeting and I said, I thought I gave a great speech when I did that, and I said, "We have two priorities." MAG is famous for being great at transportation and that continues to be one of our, you know, if not the focus of MAG. We've got to get the Prop 400 extension taken care of. And MAG, our county, our region, has gone from being really bad at transportation to being really good at transportation compared to the nation people come here, and that's one of the things that they're struck by is we do a good job at that. Along with transportation, one of the reasons I'm encouraged is MAG is now taking on homelessness. And this is the place where regional strategies and implementations are going to be decided. And I'm excited for us to do as good a job with homelessness as we are doing with transportation at MAG. So that's why I'm encouraged. We've talked about regional cooperation and I appreciated your opening comments where you said every community comes at this from a different place, every community has different needs, but every community has to participate. So I like that strategy and I think that's something that we can work with. As far as, we're anxious to hear from this council and from our community as to what are Mesa's, what should our focus be? Right now, I'm under the impression that it's bridge housing and it's expanding services to areas that are underserved, particularly the east side. Right now, we have a lot of human services infrastructure in the west side of Mesa, not so much in other parts, and we need to address that. I appreciate the comments made by several of our council members saying that we need to understand this data better and we need to understand what are the important metrics. One of the data points in this presentation was that we're spending more than we ever have on homelessness. We have this, during the last year, we spent $22 million in Mesa, Arizona on homelessness. In spite of that, homelessness continues to increase. So for those of us who say, "Well, let's spend money and fix the problem," there's not a direct correlation there. And so we need to have, figure out what are the data, keeping track of the unsheltered, the families, the chronic. We need to be more sophisticated in understanding what we need to measure to understand how effective we are in responding to this challenge. But again, I'm very encouraged and things are, we're going to get better at this. And the cavalry has arrived and that's MAG, and we're going to participate with our regional partners in our neighboring cities and I think get better at this. So Amy, thank you, and Natalie, thank you for what you're doing. If there's nothing else on this, we'll move on to our next topic, our next agenda item for this meeting, which is Item 2B. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the challenges facing electric utilities and the energy markets and methods to mitigate the impacts on our customers.
Mayor, would you like a five-minute break, maybe?
Oh, yes.
Looking at the rest of your colleagues and they seem to be...
No, I apologize. Yes, it's not, why don't we start at 9:15?
Okay.
Okay?
I'm seeing everybody pushing back.
Jim? How you doing? Electricity. Frank, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Frank McCray, Energy Resources Department Director, and with me is Tony Kudoran, who's our Energy Resources Program Manager, and he's responsible for, among a variety of things, but most importantly, especially in today's world, the planning for an acquisition of our electric energy supplies as well as natural gas supplies. But today's topic is focused on electricity. In my 40 years of professional experience in the energy industry, 30 years in the Western United States, I've never witnessed or experienced anything like what's happening in the energy markets today, nothing even close. The rules and the game itself for planning and acquiring energy supplies are dramatically different, and they're changing. They continue to change and evolve, and it's not just one single event or one aspect of what influences the market, it's multiple and it's very complex. The events are compounding and multiplying and they're constantly changing. And so if we just had one of these events to address and remedy, it wouldn't be easy, but we could feasibly fix things pretty quickly. And it would be expensive, but it wouldn't have the impact on our costs that what we're facing. So, but we've got multiple events to manage and so we've pulled out all stops, we have looked at tools that we've never used before for purchasing power, suppliers that we've never reached out to before, we've reached out to those. So that's the magnitude of the challenges that we face and the efforts that we've undertaken to try to meet them. So with that, I'll let Tony talk about the good news part of this.
Thank you. So we just wanted to walk through a brief primer before we get into the market discussion. So electricity, unlike natural gas, has to be generated exactly when it's needed. Supply is constantly adjusted to match the demand. Storage is an up-and-coming technology and will be a growing factor, but up until last year, the largest storage in the country was a facility put in in 1991, compressed air energy storage. So just recently, battery storage has really come into play, but it's only been this past year. So one of the concepts we want to talk about is reserve margin. And so if you have a budget next month of $100 of expenses and you have $120 in your savings account, we'd consider that a 20% reserve margin for the topic that we're discussing. So if there's 100 megawatts of demand on the system forecasted and you have 120 megawatts of generating capacity, we're going to talk about that as a 20% reserve margin. So what we're seeing right now is extreme tightening of reserve margins. So demand growing predictably, but supply has contracted quite a bit. And so what regional planners, grid planners, utility planners do is set reserve margin percent targets, and those targets are based on risk of losing assets, basically. So power plants can go down for maintenance unexpectedly. In the case of renewable resources, their supplies, you know, are curtailed by clouds or lack of wind. So we're going to talk about reserve margins and those actual percentages here. But, you know, without going into the numbers yet, what happens when reserve margins tighten are kind of what we've seen the past year. So in California in 2020, we had severe rolling blackouts. And then in February 2021, in Texas, our reserve margins went to zero and we also saw severe rolling blackouts there. So what we're seeing is the retirement of large generating plants in the West. So Navajo Coal Generating Station was retired in 2019. San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station was retired maybe five years before that, and we're not seeing adequate build of new plants. And the West, as a region, is experiencing the fastest population growth in the country, right? So areas like Denver, Phoenix, Las Vegas, we're seeing demand grow as a result of that without the addition of what we see as adequate generating capacity. So what does that look like in the numbers? If we go back to 2016, in California, they had about 25% reserves. Last year, for the blackouts, that was down to 17%. So that was a direct cause of those outages. Record demand combined with very low generator availability. In our region, in 2016, we're sitting at right around 27%. Last year, it fell to just over 20%. This year is expected to be lower in our region, and the year after that, even lower than that. So while California has gotten their act together somewhat, they've stopped retiring plants for this year and have been actively building. In our region, it's grown even tighter and it's forecast to grow even tighter. I will say that, maybe it's obvious, but what happens in California affects us. When prices go up in California, generators in our region will bid into that market and vice versa. So any event affecting both regions is going to be a problem if reserves are low in either region. So yes, reserve percentages are going up in California, but that doesn't mean that the whole region as a kind of cohesive entity isn't going to experience problems when demand is high. This graph is a little complicated, I'll try and walk you through it. So this is our demand and our resource stack up for a typical summer day, how we usually supply it. So in red and yellow, we have a series of five contracts that we bring to you whenever they expire for replacing them. We source them through competitive RFPs. The red on the bottom are what we call our baseloads. We receive that power 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. In yellow are what we call peak purchases, those are only purchased during the summer, and they only provide power during peak hours. So from hours about 7 through 22 of the day, those resources turn on. And then in addition to that, we have our hydroelectric resources. We have a baseload of hydro that has to flow all day to keep the river running, and then we have hydro that we're able to sculpt to use during peak times. But the gap that you see between the stack of resources and the black line, which is our custard demand, that's going to be subject to market pricing. So that's when we have our agent, the Western Area Power Administration, out on the market buying on our behalf. So any questions on this? And so this is what we're primarily discussing today. So we've taken a lot of pride in coming to you and saying that in 2009, 2010, our annual supply budget for electric power was close to $17 million. And through leveraging our efforts to increase competition, increase our counterparties that we work with, we were able to drop that budget to 11.6 million last year. Those savings have been passed on to customers directly and also to the city because the city is the largest electric customer in our ESA. And, you know, this has contributed directly to having this, our city have the lowest electric operating costs probably out of any city in Arizona. But what we're seeing right now, at least in the short term, our price increases on the order of magnitude of anywhere from 250% to 700% on the spot market. So looking forward, all we can forecast is a range. We're really in it right now. We're trying to understand what's going on. Like Frank mentioned, we've been playing a game for 40 years now and the rules are changing of that game. So looking forward, we can forecast maybe a range of business-as-usual scenarios. So if we don't do anything different than what we've done before, we may be looking at next year, a power portfolio cost of anywhere from 40 to 60 million dollars. Now, we're going to talk about ways to mitigate that, but that's something that we wanted to bring to you. So we had a plan that we brought to council and put together in 2019 called the Integrated Resource Plan. In that plan, we planned to keep our 20% hydro resources and continue increasing competition for the remaining 80%, which are market purchases. But we foresaw tightening on the market and we put in alternative resources that were planned to come in by 2023. were planned to come in by 2023. So we were discussing 20 megawatts of utility scale solar, ramping up solar within our service territory, energy efficiency and conservation, increasing our customer-owned solar program, and looking at fast ramping natural gas generation within our ESA for a total of 29 megawatts at our peak, out of a peak of about 90 megawatts. So about a third of our peak capacity. We were planning to diversify away from the market by 2023. But really what we want to convey is that this came upon us much, much faster and much more drastic than we ever could have predicted. So what are we going to do about it? In the near term, we've worked with other city departments. So Water Department has agreed to reduce pumping during peak hours. That's going to help us shift demand away from peak hours. Our solid waste CNG filling has agreed not to fill our CNG trucks during peak hours. We've worked with sustainability to adjust temperature set points at city facilities. We're working on customer messaging to make sure that when these high peaking market events happen, that we're effectively communicating this to our customers. We actually had that event, one of those events occur last week. We went out with a message through our social media and PIO to let our customers know, hey, anything you can do to help us conserve during peak hours is going to help everybody. We're working with conservation programs. We believe our low-income customers are going to be most affected by this. So through LIHEAP and federal funding, we're looking at ways we can help out our low-income customers to avoid these impacts. And we already have a program in place called the Summer Energy Assistance Program, which provides rate relief for our customers. That's in place. I think we have something like 200 customers, a few more on that, and that's growing. We're working with local relief organizations. And then from the city perspective, we're working with budget to come up with ways to mitigate the impact to our customers. Over the long term, our primary focus is going to be diversification of our portfolio. So what we want to do, undertake as soon as possible is a study on generation within our service territory. We believe that's going to pull us away from market fluctuations and insulate our customers from those fluctuations, and is going to be the best way to do that. We do have utility scale solar that we brought to council, has been approved. We're still in the negotiations for it, but that's not going to be available until the 2023, 24 timeframe. We'll continue looking at solar at local city facilities, but those are generally very small projects compared to what we need to actually make an impact on our portfolio. But we consider that helpful, so we're going to continue investigating that. And one concept that we're also looking at is called a microgrid, which is a self-isolating section of the grid, a small section of the grid, that if, for instance, power is lost on the grid in general, that section's able to isolate itself and provide its own power. But when that microgrid's not operating, we want to use those generators to generate power to offset market purchases at the time. So those are on the supply side. On the demand side, we'd like to continue to work with sustainability on demand reduction programs at city buildings. So that's going to save the city itself money. Continue investigating customer programs. Our AMI and AMR program, smart meters, that's going to be very big. Currently, we have no way to incentivize our customers to save money during peak hours. We can ask them via social media to help out, but truly there's no financial incentive, direct financial incentive for them to do so. So by implementing time of use rates through our AMI and AMR program, we're able to enact those conservation measures. And then we'll be continuing our net metering program for our customers who want to put solar on their rooftops. We recently reached 1 megawatt of total installed capacity in that program. It's moving very fast, and we're happy to try and keep up with that.
Tony, if I could add one thing on the rates, one of the tools for customer service that the smart meter program will allow us to do is what's called a prepay program. Prepay programs are probably the most effective conservation programs that utilities have been able to implement for our lower-income customers. So we're pretty anxious to get those smart meters in place so that we can begin developing those prepay programs. Salt River Projects had a lot of success with that program for those customers, and typically those customers see a dramatic decrease in their consumption.
So following that altered plan from our IRP, where it's within the constraints of the IRP, but altered a little bit from our preferred program, this is a slice of what it might look like by 23, 24. So currently, we're at about 80% of our supply portfolios purchased on the market. But with this kind of shifted plan, 10 megawatts of internal gas generation, we'd be looking at reducing that exposure from 80% to 40%. Now, we're currently looking at budgetary quotes on up to 25 megawatts of gas generation. But what we're really going to be wanting here is a third-party evaluation of where the utility should go with that generation. So we're hoping to work with local consultants to provide a perspective on where we should go as a utility, how big, where it should be sited, should we do it. But utility scale solar would take a significant position in our portfolio of about 17% with two projects. Our hydro would remain about 19%. Our local solar, so between the projects in downtown and our customers putting solar on their rooftop, that would be up to about 2%. And the remainder would be on the microgrids, gas generation, and market purchases.
Just one elaboration there. When we say gas-fired generation, we will make sure that they are designed and able to be operated so that renewable gas, such as the project that Mr. Boucher is working with at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, to the extent we can find additional renewable gas, those units will be running on natural gas, renewable natural gas, when it's feasible
So with that, we'll open it up to questions.
Let me ask, I know I see a lot of hands already. Let me ask one, just to kind of teed up. How does this impact rates for our customers? Are you going to be coming to us in the near future saying, here's how we solve the problem? We wrote some big checks. We paid a lot more for electricity, and so we need to raise the rates on our customers?
We're still developing the plans, and Chris can please jump in here if I start getting astray from where we've had discussions. But we want to maintain some level of comparability with Salt River Project. As you see on those graphs of what we've accomplished in the last 10 years, and we were accomplishing the same thing for the five or six years before when that graph started. So we've become, where our bills up until now were less than SRP if you're a residential customer. So we're going to have to increase our rates in order to make sure that the financial viability of the electric utility continues. But we've targeted a way of increasing our rates to our customers. We won't recover the full cost impacts of what we're seeing in our cost in the near term, but we would increase our rates through that electric energy cost adjustment factor mechanism so that we don't go any higher than 5% above what SRP's rates would be for our customers. That's the current plan. If there's different direction from the council, I'm sure we'll, we'll figure out how to implement that.
So Mayor and Council, we talked about the electric and gas side. There's really kind of two parts to the rate. There's kind of what I call just the base rate for operations, and then there's the part of the rate that's just, we just pass on this cost, the actual energy cost. So under a typical scenario, the rate the council approves doesn't change. What happens is we just continue to pass through the costs that are coming, that we're paying for the energy because there's not really anything we can do to change that other than what you've heard today. So what we have, but what we have not done is we have not passed on this, how much of the increase did you say it was, 300? Whatever, what was the percent again?
250 to 700 in the short term.
So we didn't pass that along at this time. We've limited it to staying about, within about 5% of where SRP is. But obviously, that is not enough to cover. Now, one of the reasons we do have an enterprise fund is that we can put all the operations of water, wastewater, gas, electric, solid waste, under one large fund. So when we have these kind of fluctuations, whether it's energy cost or commodity cost or whether it's capital projects, there's kind of this dynamic of shifting back and forth to help absorb that. But we can't absorb this for the, we're allowing ourselves to absorb it for now, but recognizing it's not sustainable, and so we have to come up with, over time, some way to recover some of this. So we're, we'll be coming back to council in the fall, as we would normally annually to talk about rates. And we will probably have to, we'll have to present to the council, what is the long-term, how do we recover back this significant increase in commodity costs for the electric utility, and what will that look like over a period of time? So right now, what we've made the decision is not to impact our customers in the period of time in which we're having to pay it. What we're doing is we're absorbing it and trying to spread that out. And now we'll look at other options going forward. But right now, we're just trying to figure out a way to spread it out, but we don't know if we can even do that without having significant impacts.
Continuing with the idea of comparing ourselves to the Salt River Projects of the world, are these pressures felt by them equally? Or are we, are they felt more so by us because we're a small electric company and we're kind of at the mercy of needing to go to the market to purchase electricity?
Every utility that we've talked to in the desert southwest is facing a similar type situation. We're a little bit unique in that we heavily rely upon 80% of our energy supplies from these regional markets. We do have that 20% of our energy supply that's green renewable hydro that's under long-term contracts. And we've seen some reductions in deliveries from the hydroelectric projects because of the decline in the water levels of the Colorado River reservoirs. But most utilities are to at least some extent in much the same situation as we are. We're probably more heavily dependent upon that short-term market than many of our other peers. But Salt River Project, we reached out to them. They're taking steps that they've never taken before to try to meet their supply requirements. They've reached out and acquired a power plant that's been dormant for years. They've started trying to take that out of mothballs with, if you will, and also a transmission line that's not been maintained for several years. And so they're, they're in a similar situation. They're not quite as heavily leveraged on the market as we are, but they're facing the similar challenges as well. And I think Councilmember Freeman understands that, given his position there with SRP.
Well, just to add to it, they're in the power generation business, so their costs are a little bit lower, other than their infrastructure. So, you know, when you're generating power, you have that lower threshold. So where we buy everything 100% pretty much on the market.
We don't have a nuclear power plant.
We don't have gas turbines, nuclear battery storage.
We rely on others.
Solar.
And that cost advantage was, we had the cost advantage up until this year. That's what allowed us to reduce our rates lower, as low as we did, so that we went from being higher than SRP to being lower than SRP by a significant amount for our residential customers. And then the last year, it's changed. That's how much the game has flipped on us.
Yeah, I guess that's my observation as well, is it's been to our advantage to be nimble and not have the high overhead and be able to go to the market and pay and be more than competitive with SRP. I just wonder if, long-term, if it will still make sense for a small electric company. I guess we'll see.
Well, in terms of being small, I think we can partner with an entity like SRP to take advantage of their core competencies in designing, building, and constructing power plants. We have to have a willing participant to join with them, to either jointly own the facility and have them operate it, or for them to agree to sell us power over a longer term on a cost-plus basis. But we also have other organizations that are building power plants that we could either join as well. So even as a small entity, we can take advantages of certain opportunities and organizations that can provide us opportunities that a larger utility might otherwise enjoy, and but for the fact that we are wanting to participate in those projects, we can be able to duplicate their advantages and minimize our disadvantages from being quote-unquote "small."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Well, you know, and looking at the graph again, I mean, going from 250% upwards of 700% increase, you know, I think one of the things we have to look at as well is, I mean, we're already heavily subsidizing our electric grid, or the customers, I should say, that are on our electric grid. So I think at some point in time, we have to look at it and say, is our return on investment worth keeping and maintaining an electric grid? Or would we better off selling that grid to SRP and allowing them to take it over? Because they, you know, unlike us, they have a larger territory that they can spread that cost across to better have rates, I guess, to stabilize their rates somewhat, where we don't have that luxury. So we're going to have to rob from Peter to pay Paul to ensure that our electric pricing doesn't get to the point where it's unaffordable for, for our customers, for our residents. So I think one of the things we need to start doing as well is looking at not only what does our rate structure look like, but if this is going to be a continuing trend, can the market do it better than us? Can SRP do it better than us? And should we consider having those conversations with SRP to see if they would want to take over our electric grid? And what would that look like for Mesa long-term? Because it is such a small area within the entirety of Mesa that it may not make sense to even continue operating and maintaining our own electric grid. Just food for thought.
Well, our cost structure has been where the electric utility is not getting subsidized by anybody. Our customers.
Well, up until, up until probably soon, right?
Correct.
So we're going to be using other enterprise dollars from the gas side or from the water side or from the solid waste side now to subsidize that cost because we don't want to pass that cost on. And we can't pass, we can't pass a 300% increase on energy or electricity onto our customers. There's just no way. I mean, we're already somewhat subsidizing them through, either through LIHEAP or through the Summer Assistance Program. So there's already some type of subsidy that's going out there to help offset their cost. And whether we're eating it or we're utilizing federal dollars to offset that cost, we can't continue to subsidize a 300% or 250 or 700% increase in electric costs.
Well, at least for the last 18 years, our revenues from our electric customers have more than offset our costs and have contributed to, in significant ways, to the Enterprise Ending Fund balance. In many years, much more than what was budgeted for. So yes, we're going to end up tapping into the Enterprise Fund to offset the costs that we can't recover directly from our customers. But I think what Chris has outlined is ultimately, we're going to recover those costs from our customers. And ultimately, SRP is going to be facing cost increases as well. So I think we're going to be able to find a way to maintain comparability. We've got a couple of years where we're going to be at a disadvantage in our costs because the rules changed dramatically and very quickly in ways that we didn't anticipate. Otherwise, we would have implemented our 2019 program, starting in 2019, and wouldn't have waited until this year to start implementing it earnestly.
And I don't think we've, just if I can, I don't think we've used LIHEAP dollars directly through the electric utility until now. I think that's something we're looking into to help the customers, but we've never, to my knowledge, used those funding mechanisms.
And the Summer Energy Assistance Program has been just moderately reduced, the amount of money that we have available to the general fund transfer. But we've always, in the last several years, exceeded the budget amount of every general fund transfer by an extended amount.
Thank you. Mr. Reddy of Armstrong.
Do we anticipate this, this change to be long-term? Or is it, is there an indication that this, this change will maintain throughout this year, next year, and moving forward?
I'll let Tony chime in. Let me preface by saying, there's so much uncertainty in the market, and that's what the market is reacting to. The uncertainty creates the risk. So as So as an example, we typically would get six to seven respondents to our request for proposals. We got two this year on one product, and we got zero on the product that we're now having to pay the exorbitant prices for. So it depends upon whether the market forces correct themselves, and it depends on whether these things like reserve margins, where there is an investment by the participants in the market to add the generation capacity, or the delay or deferral of retiring significant generating units that will moderate what's going on in the market now. But at some point in time, the conditions of the market, the supply and demand balance, it's delicate, it's going to change, and we better start investing in things like renewable gas-fired generation to meet those market conditions.
But you said, over the last 10 years at least, through that graph, the market was pretty much steady, right? Until just recently?
It was steady in terms of the prices were declining.
Sure.
And we took advantage of those prices and passed those reduced costs on to our customers.
But Councilman, I think it's a good point. I mean, I think what we're saying is that worked well when we were predominantly relying upon the regional market to provide that supply, and it worked well for us. What we're seeing now is our vulnerability to the region. And so, you know, we recognize we need to be a little more balanced in what we can control and self, I don't know if we're self-generate, but generate or control ourselves. So, you know, the solar and some of those actions obviously are part of that, and we've participated not only what we've done locally, but obviously with SRP, and we'll look for those opportunities. But that's why we're talking about some of these other projects that we want to go out now and make some, you know, significant studies and recommendations from consultants about can we use our natural gas position as a, you know, natural gas provider, also to help provide, generate power also. So we're trying to, I think what we're saying is, we're always going to be reliant upon the regional market, but we want to mitigate that exposure going forward is what I think we're trying to plan on doing.
And I guess as far as the long-term, short-term question, I believe this is a short-term event. The fundamentals of the market are such that there is plenty of natural gas available to Arizona, California, New Mexico. It's trading at the same dollar value that it was trading last year, the year before, right around the $2 to $3 range. If you have a generator that is of modern efficiency, that will create 50, $30 to $50 power. We're seeing power trading, you know, as I mentioned, $200 to $700 per megawatt hour. That gap is purely risk. That is the traders on the market not willing or not able to find enough power. So that's why I think we're very focused on moving some of our portfolio away from that risk and that market to something that we can better control, like Mr. Brady said. So we're uniquely positioned as a city and as a utility that we have natural gas supplies. We have access to those markets. We can provide natural gas to ourselves very inexpensively, and we can lock that pricing in inexpensively over the long term. So, you know, other cities can't do that. They can't buy their own gas, turn it into power, empower their own city facilities, right? So, you know, I believe the fundamentals are there to return to the mean. Markets like to stray, and then market forces pull them back to the mean. I believe that's going to happen, but I believe we should be acting as if we don't have faith that that's going to happen. We should be acting proactively to pull it back down there ourselves. And so that's what we'd like to do.
Just a follow-up real quick. On that graph, so based on the strategies, what's the realistic piece that we can increase to take off pressure on the market purchases that we have here? Is it utility-scale solar projects? Could we ask SRP? I know it's 20 megawatts, right? Can we ask, is it cost-benefit to ask them for more? Or is that even an option? What are the realistic pieces? Frank, you mentioned hydroelectric. We're seeing some slowdown there, so I'm not sure if that's a realistic option, but seems like some solar, some mix of other local strategies, but...
If you go back to the load curve slide, so it's got to be something other than just solar, because if you look at that slide, solar is not really a good resource in and of itself to replace any of those resource blocks up there. It needs to be combined with some other type of technology such as fast-start gas generation or battery storage or some other type of energy storage. And we have the advantage of having a chilled water system. So thermal energy storage is a viable option for us in order to back up, if you will, or firm up solar when it's intermittent or when it simply doesn't produce power, when it starts, when the sun starts going down. So we can increase any one of those resource tools that we have shown in that pie chart, but there are certain resources that are going to be more effective at adding a megawatt for a megawatt of need than others. A megawatt of solar on peak is not worth the same, is not the same megawatt. It's less than a megawatt if that was a gas generation. So 1 megawatt of gas on peak is equal to probably about 6 tenths of a megawatt of solar on peak.
I'm sorry, I know Mr. Luna has a question, but can you explain to me the correlation between our access to natural gas and how that allows us to have access to electricity? We don't generate electricity with gas, do we?
Not yet. That's what we're looking to do, is bring in a consultant to take a look at what would be our best option for doing that. In 2000, maybe year 2000 through 2010, the city actually owned and operated close to 10 megawatts, I think 15 megawatts of natural gas generation. Now that, in my opinion, that generation was poorly planned for. They basically took some generators off of a very large cargo ship that weren't rated for stationary use in like a downtown area. And then they tried to put emissions controls on it, and they tried to cool them down. And it was just kind of a, an effort to make it work, right? But what we're proposing is doing that work beforehand to actually prove the concept, bring it to you for approval, you know, do all that due diligence so that, you know, what we're going to end up with, we think is going to be a really efficient, really clean set of generators, is what we'd like to do.
If you recall, one of the first slides where it talked about California hasn't had a rolling blackout since, for 19 years, those units were brought into Mesa as a part of the market going through what was going on 19 years ago, now 20 years ago.
But let's talk about going forward. We don't need to talk about the sins of the past. So going forward, the idea is to come to study, and we believe that it's a reasonable approach to diversify our portfolio, if you would, to look at gas generation power. And because we are in the gas business as a major, you know, obviously, gas company, we have access to that commodity, and we can leverage that position that we're buying that, you know, through El Paso or whatever, from the different areas. We can bring that into the city and now use that very low, much lower, relatively lower cost natural gas and put it through these big, what are they, turbines? I'm not sure where they...
There can be smaller combustion turbines or internal combustion engine generator sets.
And we can put them right in the same location as some of our big substations from the electric grid, and then we could run it into, put that power right into our electric grid. So we, but we want to make sure we study this. We want to do it right. But we think, obviously, this is what happens in the open market, right? The market prices have gone up. It's now pushing us to say, okay, you know, we now can justify, you know, spending money to build out these turbines because we are not willing to pay, you know. The difference for that cost versus what we're having to pay on market for electricity is now justifying us moving forward. And so that's why we want to explore that, move that ahead. And again, reducing our exposure to the fluctuations of the open market. Now hopefully, and I think this will happen, right? It's the capital, you know, it's a typical market. The prices are going up. The prices are going up so much, there's investors out there saying, well, wait a minute. If I can get, you know, half of that increase, I could go and invest in some other plant. You know, it just takes time. You can't, these things don't happen over a week or a day. They just take time for the markets to adjust to it. But somebody's out there looking at these prices, just like Tony is, but they're looking at it from an investor standpoint, saying, wait a minute, if I could get, you know, I can sell this to communities like Mesa for a reduced amount, I could make some money off of that. That's what we're hoping, right? So, but we want to take more of the matters into our own hands. That's really our message for you today, is to see there has been a change in the market. And to respond to that, we want, we're proposing is that we take some steps to bring some of that closer into house. And in an area with gas that, again, we're in a unique position as a gas provider, that we can establish that opportunity, and we think that would help offset some of the costs that we're seeing going forward.
That makes sense to me. If we're going to have unlimited supply of wholesale natural gas, it seems like we...
It's cheaper, for sure.
We can be very competitive. Mr. Luna and then Mr. Freeman.
Just really quick. So Frank, we're talking about the central Mesa in terms of electricity, right? That's where we're going to see a price increase. And then you're proposing a time-of-use plan to the residents living there as well as our city facilities. Is that correct?
That's correct. So our electric service area, which we refer to as the ESA, ESA, is five and a half square miles in downtown Mesa, centered in downtown. It's roughly from universe, excuse me, from Brown Road to Broadway and from Extension to Stapley. It's not that square area, but it's a good portion of that.
And we currently experience the market anomaly where prices are increasing. As a result, we have to pass on, we may have to pass on some of those increases to our residents living in the area. Now, as far as city facilities, I know, you know, I have a library in East Mesa. We don't provide, you don't pay for that. That's not part of the electric use for, as far as the city building. Is that correct?
That's correct. They are direct customers of Salt River Project.
Okay, so that won't be affected at all?
Well, they'll be affected by SRP's rates. SRP will administer and incur costs differently than we have or will, and will administer their rates accordingly.
And so as far as time-of-use plan, when do you plan to implement that, providing council approves that? Are you looking at July or are you doing that now?
Well, we, it's depending on us having those smart meters in place. And so the schedule for smart meters is...
Probably another two years.
Is another two years. So we will hopefully implement something like a time-of-use rate service and that prepay service consistent with when we get the full implementation of the smart meters. We may try to do something as kind of a pilot program when we get the initial Phase 1 meters installed.
But then the blip of the market may change, and we may not have to make any of those adjustments.
Well, I think we'll still want to offer customers services like prepay as well as time-of-use, because while we have a plan that's going to mitigate a big portion of what the risk is certainly now, we'll still be somewhat exposed to some risk even if we implement the plan that we have. As the conditions of the market change, we will probably modify the plan, if necessary, to either add more generation so that we control our costs more directly, or we will enter into longer-term contracts so that we can avoid the risk of the types of volatility that we're seeing now.
So those residents living in Central Corridor won't be experiencing these increases currently, right? And we're going to wait a couple of years before?
No, they're receiving, some of the costs are being passed on now. What we're doing is not passing on the entire cost. We're trying to spread that out and look for other programs. So we didn't want to, you know, just think about what you've heard in Texas and other places where they're getting, you know, $10,000, $20,000 bills. We're trying to mitigate that kind of impact by absorbing it for now and just spreading that cost out over a period of time.
And then you'll offer opportunities for those low-income through the LIHEAP program so they can...
That's in place now, right? That's already in place.
And the summer energy assistance program as well.
Okay, great. All that's in place now. Okay. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, you know, I was looking at the numbers, and I guess that was like a $19 million, $250,000 swing on just costs from last year to currently, I mean, to the current pricing. So, I mean, that's a huge swing. And I think that just reinforces the fact that how can we, as a small utility, become more self-reliant? You know, battery storage is new. It's not really in play right now. It's being developed. The large solar generating pieces that SRP and others are putting in, up to 500 megawatt, are still being built. As you know, they're not going to be in play yet. So, you know, we're kind of constrained, and you are, is looking at different purchase-power agreements to help, how you can offset some of these large swings in costs. And so I, you know, I know SRP is doing the gas turbines, and I brought that up to you, that we should consider that, because those are so efficient. And I thought, well, we buy natural gas. We're, you know, marketing it, and it just makes perfect sense. And these gas turbines can be started like in 10 minutes and produce, you know, up to 25 KW or even more. So to help offset any black or brownouts that we might have in our utility, you know, we're basically 17,000 people in the utility that you have, and, you know, we're, SRP has 1 million 30,000 customers and growing, and we're not growing so substantially. But I think if we added, not to berate the gas generation, but if we add it to our infrastructure, it just creates more leverage for us, but it's a valuable asset that if, some reason, if it were ever to sell, you know, that, hey, you've got a gas turbine here and here and here. And I know that's a cost to build that, but we're protecting ourselves. And that's what we need to do, is continue to look towards that. And gas turbines today are very, very efficient, as you know, and it just makes good sense. So with that, I think we're on the right track. It's just with the natural disasters that happened in Texas, that we're not prepared for that, shut down a lot of generation. And those utilities learn from that, but they don't have the utility regulation that we have in Arizona that consequently had a lot of failure in Texas. So I would just say, just ask the question, are you looking at any additional PPAs currently? Or we...
We're looking, I've reached out to just about every supplier that I'm aware of in my 30 years in the Western market, except for Enron. That's probably the only entity that I haven't called to see what's going on with them. We're all in the same situation. And we are looking at power purchase agreements where we are in the negotiations, discussions with Salt River Project on trying to get a piece of their solar projects. So again, we can take advantage of those economies of scale that big utilities with a million-plus customers have, so that our 17, 18,000 customers can take advantages of those types of economies of scale. Technology such as combustion turbines have improved dramatically. They're much more reliable. Back in the 80s and 90s, they had a real difficult time having them start when they needed to start. But they've gone to things like aerod derivative turbines, which are more reliable. Internal combustion engines are more reliable and more efficient than they've ever been. And one of the advantages we have is we have a Caterpillar dealership here that is very good at doing things like operating and maintaining generators that can be used for emergency purposes, these microgrid purposes, as well as prime generation and peak shaving like what we're talking about. The other thing is, when SRP builds a plant full of combustion turbines or APS, we can enter into discussions and negotiations to try and buy a piece of that or have a purchase-power agreement with them to have them operate it and sell us power out of those at some kind of a cost-plus basis.
I think partnerships are key, too. You know, we shouldn't absorb all the costs, but regardless, I think we're on the right track. So, thank you.
There's a group of irrigation and electric districts, co-ops, and other municipally-owned electric utilities in Arizona that have formed a group that's looking at opportunities to either buying existing plants, getting into larger contracts, so there's a large buying presence in the market, or going out and looking at development for opportunities for new power plants as well. So we're uncovering all of those stones. One of the... One of the things we did in the last year or so is we used to use what's called an EEI or Edison Electric Institute standard form contract. Some suppliers were reluctant to enter into an agreement with that and they wanted what's called the Western Systems Power Pool Association type agreement. So now we've joined the Western Systems Power Pool so that we can enter into transactions under that contract.
I was just going to say that we're not the only small utility having a problem with getting electricity. So joining as the co-ops and putting that strength together to help leverage some, you know, hopefully getting power a little cheaper is what we need to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll make a few comments. First of all, you guys do an amazing job in juggling all this and making your strategies and I certainly trust your advice of what we need to do. One concern I have about the natural gas is it's not really considered a clean energy, right? But I do like it for, you know, I feel like it sounds like it's what we need to do right now to get over this lack of supply. And I do like having it as, as maybe other more clean energies became, become available as we go forward, that we could have this gas as a backup with that microgrid, providing the resiliency for all kinds of things that we have no idea may come up. So there would be an advantage in positioning ourself in that manner. Do you have any concerns about hydroelectricity and having any impact for this summer? I know Lake Mead is at levels of possibly not being able to generate electricity. They're getting very low, I think at their 25% capacity and that was a few weeks ago. Will that have any impact for the summer?
Yes, it will. And all, Tony knows a little bit more about what the status of those dams on the Colorado River are. But going back to the gas fired generation, you know, one of the things that Mr. Boucher and I've had a lot of discussions about is as we get ready to bring on things like solar where we need some type of additional resource to firm them up or, so when they're intermittent source of energy, which is sunlight dissipates, that there's another source of generation to pick up the demand that we would otherwise lose from losing the solar, we can pick it up with another generation asset. And finding ways to either acquire renewable natural gas on the market or for the types of projects cities developing at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant or other water reclamation plants to provide the renewable natural gas so that we're going from a hydrocarbon that's fossil fuel based to one that's a waste recovery type source. So we felt confident in talking with Scott that there's a way to develop that over time, but we got to get that generation on the ground and get it, get it installed and operational connected to the grid, whether it's a microgrid generator, whether it's a simple cycle turbine or an internal combustion engine, getting those installed, operating, and then we can transition to things like renewable natural gas when it's being produced. And then we can meet things, easily meet things like the Global Climate Action Plan that the council's adopted.
Great. So the gas that we talked about from the affluent water or the gases, there's a name for it. I've been sitting here too long. My brain's not working. Off of the water treatment plants and capturing those gases, we had that presentation on the Climate Action Plan a couple of weeks ago. So those would be ones that we can convert into using for electricity in our grid. So that's.
Correct. I think the initial flow of renewable gas is kind of earmarked for the Scott solid waste fleet, but as we identify more and more feedstocks going into those water reclamation plants and as we look to expand the capability of other water reclamation plants to produce that renewable natural gas, we can earmark that and use it in these types of generation assets.
Great, great. Are we okay this summer? When I looked at one of the slides, which was number 27 on the very end, and you said that we didn't really have any bids. Are we okay to get through the summer because we are not set up? Is it just the cost? I'm concerned, we have a lot of growth in the downtown area, a lot of units under construction. I don't know if they're going to come online this summer or not, but we know we have a lot of new units since last year that we didn't have. So I just wanted to kind of get a picture of the five and a half square miles as far as resiliency. Are we at a jeopardy of any blackouts this summer since we're depending on market availability and supply?
Well, my, my policy is we will do and we will find the energy that we need to keep our customers from being in a blackout situation. If we're in a blackout situation, unless there's different direction from management, if we're in a blackout situation, it'll only be because other utilities in Arizona are also in a blackout situation. But there's the blackout issue, which is when the supply of electricity is less than the demand for electricity and that's something that the market's going to dictate. So that's why we've asked for, to be ready to communicate with our customers that things are not only getting precarious from a price situation, but that delicate balance between demand and supply in the region is getting close to where demand exceeds supply and that's where we all have to figure out a way to conserve and reduce our consumption. And that's what happened in California last August. Supply diminished because of things like cloud covers increased, clouds from fires caused solar generation to decrease, wind generation decreased. They've had significant plant retirements that led to very low reserve margins as we've shown in those tables. And when anomalies happen like high temperatures with increased demand and consumption or when you have a source of generation that fails, that's when you have to start experiencing blackouts or rolling blackouts. So that's my number one goal is to avoid blackouts. The second one is to minimize the costs.
Great. So in the meantime, to any residents and businesses that are listening in today, and I'm sure we'll have more public announcements about this, especially on days of extreme heat, since we know air conditioners are a huge draw, is that we cut back on our electric use as much as we can, maybe thermostat, maybe don't charge the car until the evening, maybe turn off the lights, the fans and, you know, just conserve the best we can so that we can minimize the impact on the costs. And how long will it take to get the gas generating turbines online?
Well, these are relatively long lead times. I'm thinking that 24 months is about the minimum amount of lead time between, you know, we've got to go through some studies to figure out where's the best place to put them electrically, where's the best place to put them from an emissions permitting perspective and where do we have the best gas supply? And there is some need for water for cooling purposes, although a lot of technologies have gone to air cooling. So we have a number of different key factors, just like any site selection process, that we have to go through and that's part of that 24 month lead time. But we're hoping we can get these on before the summer peak of 2023.
Thank you for all your work on this. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other discussion on this item? All right, well, we'll look forward to hearing more as this progresses. Thank you for your work on that. The next item on our agenda is item three, current events summer, including meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share with us, Counsel? Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday I attended the Falcon Field Community Meeting, had an opportunity to meet some of the tenants and individuals that take advantage of our airport. There will be an 80th anniversary ice cream social on July 10th, so anyone willing to go, we invite them to attend and it's going to be at the Warbird's, Warbird's facility. So please come by and get some ice cream. They're also renovating the family's facility where people can come and watch the airplanes take off. So we want to make sure that you come in and take, take advantage of that. I've also been attending the Naleo Conference, which is being held virtually. And yesterday I attended the Chief Mesa, Chief Ken Cost Mesa Community Forum where the public was invited to look at the survey results that the Morrison Institute just undertook. So we had good participate, participation and look forward to more of those kind of things. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
I did. I was able to go to the Mesa Police Department's Youth Academy Leadership Meeting. I believe you went as well.
That's what I was going to say too. I went yesterday.
But anyway, I went and I enjoyed it, so thank you. All right, go ahead.
Sorry, that was, it's just been so long. We've been meeting for a long time today. Yes, that's what I was going to say. I got to go speak at that yesterday and meet those kids and it's a super neat program. We're going to go next week to the graduation too, I think, so I love that.
See you there. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just throw in that I attended a couple of the One Community summits and One Community is looking regionally how we're addressing issues around the LGBTQ community and making them, having that equality and that welcoming across all our communities and the ways we're working together. The mayor spoke at one of them and I'm so proud that we have a non-discrimination ordinance and working with One Community in order to expand our equality for all. Thanks.
Amen, thank you. Counsel, anything else you'd like to share with us? Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We're kind of getting ready to wrap things up. So we do not have a morning study session next Thursday, but we have a council meeting on July 1st. It, the, we'll be reviewing the agenda for July 1st and July 8th, but we'll also have a presentation from the city auditor on his proposed audit plan for the year. I think we can still meet at 5:15 and get that all done. So we'll just meet at the regular time. And then we will have a council meeting on Thursday, July 8th. That'll be the final council meeting of the, for, before the, before the summer break. And just to let the council know what we're planning on doing, unless I hear otherwise from council, we've talked about opening all our buildings to the public, general public. And I think we felt like if we start using the month of July to begin providing that notice that August 2nd, which is a Monday, would be a good time to make that announcement. So unless I hear otherwise, we'll begin using August 2nd as the day that we'll open all the doors for the public to come in for transactions, counter service, just like we were pre-COVID so that those doors will be open. So that would be August 2nd. Oh, and then, yes, then following that, of course, then the first council meeting where the public would be able to come in would be Thursday, August 19th, which would be a study session and then all council meetings after that. But we're also getting a lot of inquiries about utility counters and permitting counters and other places where we engage with the public. We'll continue to provide our online and remote service, or, you know, our online services and we hope to continue to be able to provide that service for our public going forward. Our kiosks are taking in over $700,000 in utility pills, so it's, or maybe even more than that now. So it's doing very well, so.
Are we going to continue the virtual engagement for city council meetings or has that been decided?
Oh, as far as the public?
Mm-hmm.
I guess if they want to, I mean, we all, I don't know.
Like blue card?
Oh, yeah. I guess we, I don't know. We haven't talked about that.
Call in and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, good, good question. I mean, I think we're all trying to figure out post-COVID, what do we like about the COVID period that we want to stick with, right? And I'm open to talking about, we want as much community involvement as possible, right? And so if, if we, certainly we want to welcome the public back for live interactions, but if we could continue to, you know, engage remotely, I, I don't, I think the more pathways for the public to interact, the better.
Dee, especially is very good at reading comment cards.
Yeah, it's good reading time for him.
That's why I suggest it going forward.
Yeah. That's a great question. Let's continue to talk about that, but I'd like to explore that idea. All right, thank you. Mr. Brady, anything else? All right, that concludes our agenda for today. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.